Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission. We're holding a public hearing this evening and it is started at 7:00 PM. And it's regarding the proposed allocation of the town's available water capacity yield and available sewer capacity yield among allocation categories pursuant to Town Code Chapter 109 entitled Water and Section 109-19-14 entitled Water and Sewer Allocation. The Town Engineer's recommendation for division of allocation categories is available for review at the Town Hall and also on the website. And are there any comments?
Yeah, could you slow down and repeat that again if I can?
Oh, sure.
If I can stand half of it, thank you.
Okay, sure. So, got the 7:00 PM part, we got the Planning Commission part. Okay, so what it is, is that this is the public hearing for the proposed allocation of the town's available water capacity yield and available sewer capacity yield among allocation categories pursuant to the Town Code Chapter 109 entitled Water and Section 109-19-14 entitled Water and Sewer Allocation. The town's engineer makes a recommendation for division of those allocation categories, and those are available, and we're going to talk about it tonight, but they're also available on the website, and we have reviewed those before, but we're following what the town engineer is recommending. And that's what this public hearing is for you guys, I know you're all here for that. Thank you. Thank you, sorry about that, I'm in fast mode.
Just out of curiosity, how many of you have gone on to the town website and you have looked to see what the proposed allocation recommendation by the town engineer is? Okay, I see one hand.
Some of it.
All right. How many of you came tonight to make a comment with regard to this public hearing and that topic?
Comment and understanding.
I'm sorry?
A comment and understanding of what's going on.
Of the water allocation?
Yes.
Great, okay.
I mean, maybe it would be useful Barney for you to give just a general summary of the process and so forth, and what the recommendation is.
Sure. So every two years for our code, we're required to give a recommendation of when we have available water and sewer, which we do have some available water and sewer now, we have to make a recommendation into what categories we want to split those up. It could be commercial, industrial, residential, we have a total of 13 categories. And so that's what this is doing, is just doing our two-year, our biannual recommendation. They will make their recommendation tonight that will go to the Town Council for their approval at the next meeting.
And that's under a new business, but what basically what we're doing is we're keeping the same recommendation that we did two years ago. And we'll vote on it later tonight on a new business when you guys are all still here, I'm sure.
But this is the time, if you have any comments for that, to please make them.
And then we do so by coming up, just giving your name and address and whatever comments you have. Yes, sir?
Do you want comment now?
On the public, yeah, on the water allocation, yes.
On the water allocation, yes, sir. And you need to come to the podium, state your name and where you live, please.
And take your time, please, no sprinting.
My name is Edward Morris, and I live at 5970 Pelican Hill Drive, and I came here to hear about the water allocation because I've had neighbors that have run out of well water at 350 feet, and I'm at like 350 feet, and I've been told by the well drillers that there's other people in the area that have had dry wells and expecting more, the water flow is less in the winter, of course. And all of this is what is done in the city and its development affects the surrounding areas as well, I'm in Shaladon. And so people are not talking and thinking much about the impact of that. Now, we're supposed to have a large aquifer right here, which has enabled the additional water, which has been authorized, and which is great. But water is becoming shorter around the country, there's different places around the world that cities have run out of water, and I just wish somebody would take that into consideration, the impact of the draws, which is a heavy draw here upon surrounding areas and our domestic, our home wells. That's all I had wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public hearing?
Okay, that's it.
Okay, we'll give it a couple more, one more second. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll begin our regular meeting, with a call to order, pledges of allegiance.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have approval of the February 26, 2018 minutes. I only saw one typo on page three.
Yeah, I have notes to that effect, but otherwise content-wise, I thought it was right on, and I would move to approve them as written with, you know, a couple of changes.
Anyone second that?
I'll second.
Okay, we had a tie, so Patty second it.
Beat you two down first.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have citizens' comments, and these are for items that are not on the agenda, so if your comment is for something on the agenda, we're going to get to it, but if you have something that's not on the agenda, please come to the podium and give your name and your address. And again, take your time. Okay, so is there nobody wants, oh, you do, okay, great, I wasn't sure if you were sitting or coming.
I was sitting and dropping my stuff off.
Okay, great, multitask.
Brian Bieda, 1005 Longbow. I'm here tonight as I worked with the Parks and Rec Committee to have the PED walking trails removed from Nottingham. I had a recommendation, I'd like to recommend to you guys, that it's removed from the master plan, as well as the Carroll County master plan, for Nottingham as a development. Sorry, I didn't bring my big map, but Councilman Hushower, in his meeting, had proposed to them to make a recommendation to you guys to have that trail leading into and up Crossbow Road, and in the green, the bike paths around the community removed from the maps that were currently there. As a resident, and also as the Nottingham MTR president, I'd like to make that motion to you guys this evening.
Okay.
I think that's been removed. I know we had suggested to Carroll County to remove it.
Yeah, Carroll, this is Carroll County, yeah, they added this into the Carroll County plan. I have a couple of questions about that as far as sidewalk maintenance, town issue for us as the HOA to take care of that, also parking for outside residents.
And we also, that is an agenda item, and we have a Carroll County planner here who's going to bring that up.
Okay. When we get to that topic, Brian, could you give some rationale as to, you know, why you're making that recommendation?
The rationale, the only rationale I have is reaching out to the councilmen on, is the town going to take care of the sidewalks as it's included as a pedestrian map for out-of-the-neighborhood residents to come to? As if it's going to be up to the homeowner to maintain the sidewalks, as municipalities usually don't take care of their sidewalks, it's usually the homeowner's responsibility. If outside neighbors or neighboring communities or everyone's walking and using them, it brings up wear and tear on the sidewalk. Also, liability for slips and falls, any injuries that come out of that, that would be the neighborhood's responsibility under their insurance to take care of that, unless the town wants to add that to their policy and cover that as well. The third thing would be parking. If people come from, obviously, and park by the pool, or park on the streets in front of people's houses to use the sidewalks, or like, that's also something I'd like to bring up.
Okay, Linda, would you like to have a seat, and then we'll get to our Carroll County planner?
All right, thank you.
And then we can ask your questions there. Hi.
Hi.
Come on up, please. And again, I'm getting the name, help me.
No Comas.
No Comas, okay, one of these days I'll get it, no Comas, welcome, and thank you.
Good evening. Yes. So I'm going to start with some items before I'll end with the bike PED and just give you a few updates about some other things going on. Where the county, again, is working on its comprehensive rezoning, and we finished our outreach meetings, and so now there will be draft comments on the commercial, industrial, and employment campus will be distributed on April 4th to the Planning Commission. And I don't believe there'll be any action, but it will be distributed on April 4th. The annual report, it's expected that by next meeting, I'll have, probably prior to the meeting, we'll have a draft to town staff, and then the draft will be there for review for the Planning Commission, as well as a letter of acceptance to be signed by the chair. Okay, and, all right, so moving on to the bike PED plan. So what we have submitted to you are the portions that cover the Town of Mount Airy for Chapters 3 and 4. Chapters 3 and 4 basically cover existing conditions, adopted planned infrastructure, so anything that's been in town, county master plans are on, are in those chapters. And Chapter 4 covers items that, or desires that would like to be seen in the future. So as far as the town, I think there was just one connection to be seen as a future connection in Chapter 4, but the sections that we've given you are covering those two sections. And the full chapters are available on our website, carolbikepedplan.org. And so what we just need from you this evening is any comments that you have on text that should be changed, and I guess whatever additional information that you might have that we need to be aware of to update those sections, so we can get them to our Planning Commission for acceptance. And I'll just give you kind of an overview of the process we're going to go through to get the, to move the Carroll County Bike PED Plan forward. So what we're doing is we're taking each chapter, one or two at a time, to our Planning Commission, to the County Planning Commission. The next step will be to get those, in the process, we'll be getting those chapters reviewed by the towns, by the county agencies. And we started off last year, of course, with getting the maps approved by the Planning Commissions. So the Planning Commission will vote, chapter by chapter, whether or not to accept those chapters. So right now, they've been distributed Chapters 3 and 4, and they'll be determining whether or not to accept those chapters, I believe, on April 17th. Prior to that, last year, they were distributed Chapter 5, which is the tourism chapter, which again is on our website, and they accepted that on, in January. So the portions that we're now bringing forward are the, include the town sections, and so they'll determine whether or not to accept those chapters based on input from the towns. And once we go through each chapter, the next will be the design alternatives, which will come forward in April. Once we get through each of the chapters, there's about eight, then the Planning Commission will determine whether or not to accept the full document. And so then it will go out for the typical 60-day review process, state clearing out, public comment, and the County Planning Commission will vote whether or not to approve, and then it will go to the Board of County Commissioners. So I'll just state, I think I've mentioned this before, but the plan, as far as being adopted by the towns, is the town's choice. We would recommend considering adopting the plan because of funding, based on the governor's administration, funding opportunities are greater when you have a comprehensive plan as opposed to a just kind of disjointed effort of bike PED planning, so, but of course, it's up to the towns and municipalities to determine whether or not to adopt the plan as a whole. So...
Okay, just a simple basic question. To a great extent, primarily, the Carroll County plan
Yes.
accepts, endorses, supports, echoes what we have in the Mount Airy master plan.
Right.
With regard to, for example, you cite the quality of life rationale that we put in there, and the feeling that these kinds of connections, pathways, access through neighborhood and community connections, we feel is a positive in terms of the quality of life in the community, generally speaking. And then you do the same thing in terms of the transportation positioning
Right.
that we have in our plan. So you are echoing the values and the positions we've already taken, for the most part, so from that standpoint, it coincides. Yeah, we like that.
I have a question, which you may not be the one to answer, but this last page here refers to the Nill property, east of Maryland 27, south of Waterville Route, and I have not seen in writing anywhere, but I've heard rumors that Mr. Nill denied the request, the town's request for an easement. So I don't know if Larry Hushower's here, or anybody else from Parks and Rec, or anybody who has actual knowledge that can speak to that?
Well, that's what he said.
Yes, he's not going to, he's, he was at the council meeting, and he's not, he is not, he has denied the request.
So we just had it from verbally, okay.
He will, he will not.
Pardon me. And so as far as the easement that already exists, is that proposed to be used instead? I mean, he doesn't, or is he saying we can't use that?
It's not a real easement or anything like that.
Right, well, I mean, it's water...
He's fine with that one, he's fine with that.
He's fine with that, okay, okay. So has there been any discussion at Parks and Rec? I guess it's been very...
Just happened, last week.
Okay, all right. I was writing a brief, I was not paying attention to anything, I'm sorry.
We do our day jobs.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so, in the question, and as far as the map then, we do see that the part that's, we're recommending removal of the pedestrian parkway, and removal of the planned mixed-use path, and this is part, this is Summit Ridge, or this is?
No.
Nottingham, sorry, sorry.
You need mills to get you.
Well, coming in front of this house.
Right. So, I mean, that's what, we already had it removed, so there's, I don't see it as an issue.
Well, this is where, this is actually, in light of the concerns that came from the Nottingham community, staff put forward recommendations to remove the, removal of the planned mixed-use path that is delineated in yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, it's there.
I see it.
Tim, I think your presentation's messing up mine.
Oops.
Uh-oh.
Hold on. So essentially, it's the, it's the east-west connection that would go through the Nill property and travel along Arrowwood Lane and Loxley Lane.
Which is?
Mm-hmm, yep. So that is recommended to be removed from the proposed maps, as are the sidewalks delineated in green. So, and I apologize to the public, there are copies of this back there.
Yeah, yeah, it's back there if you want to see what we're seeing.
Heather, you're saying that you've already made that recommendation, that we've removed that, because it's not consistent?
Yes, so, staff has recommended
Okay.
that, that those be removed, and that recommendation was sent to the Board of Parks and Recs, and as Mr. Bieda explained, the Parks and Recs Board has also made that recommendation that the Planning Commission act on that removal. And I've been in contact with No Comas as well.
Okay.
So there's actually two actions that county and town staff are asking the town Planning Commission to take tonight, and that's to authorize the Chapters 3 and 4 of the, for the text of the plan as presented, or with any desired revisions, and to also authorize the proposed revisions to the Town of Mount Airy Bike PED Route Map.
Okay.
That's on page number one, right down at the bottom. Action...
Yeah, I see it.
All right, I recommend, are there any more comments, questions? I move that we authorize Chapters 3 and 4 as presented with desired revisions if necessary, and secondly, to authorize the proposed revisions to the Mount Airy Bike PED Route Map as recommended by the Board of Parks and Rec.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, next we have our Frederick County Planner, Tim Goodfellow, and your presentation hopefully hasn't been toast.
Whoops. Moving right along.
So Tim was going to give us an update on the livable Frederick master plan, and also we'd promised maps for this time around, since no one had maps last time?
There's a page coming up.
Or we had maps, but public did not.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission members, is this on?
What is?
Yeah, I was here last month, and we discussed the, I gave you a kind of a status, an update report on the current development plans in the eastern part of the county, by looking at our master plan, our comprehensive plan, and our zoning map. So I'd like to review those again with the images on the screen this evening. So the areas I'll be describing are certainly the Mount Airy area and In Byrnes, the Green Valley area, New Market, the Lingonore area, and the Monrovia area. This is just the legend from our zoning maps and our comprehensive plan, and those are transferred to each image that I'll show in a moment.
Can you see that better, please?
Okay, yeah, maybe some lights, if we could dim the lights, that might help a bit.
And it's jumping.
Oh, yes, it is moving. No earthquakes.
It's nervous.
Yeah, it's...
Ah, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe not the most clear image, but this is the, the county's Mount Airy Community Growth Area. In red is the county's designation of the, of the Community Growth Area. In black, you can, it's kind of hidden by the red in certain spots, the black is the municipal boundary, and as you can see, the red and the black match up and align in most of the areas on the western side of town and on the northern side of town. But as we discussed last month, you know, the, here's the laser, so the, to the west of the town boundary is mainly existing well and septic development indicated by this rural residential land use designation there. It's all existing well and septic development. There is an area, it's the Rigler property here, shown as low-density residential, anticipated to be annexed at some point in the future perhaps, with public water and sewer. The other area that's shown here in the solid yellow, it's the, what we call or refer to as the Zeltman property, it's no longer owned by Zeltman, I don't know the current owner's name, the company's name, but in 2012, this was added, this land use designation of low-density residential was added to the county's master plan, comprehensive plan. Then to the south of the town, this is the, this is designated Office Research Industrial, and then further south here is the 84 Lumber area, and that's, has an industrial designation. So I want to move right to the zoning. So as you can see, the Zeltman property, wrong name of the owner, has agricultural zoning, it does not have any residential zoning or mixed-use zoning, same with Rigler, so those would be anticipated for development to be annexed into the town. The properties here, south of 144, the Day properties, I believe, they're also zoned agricultural today, and then the properties around the 84 Lumber area are zoned industrial. It's a bit hard to see there.
National 871, right?
That's correct. So I'll move through these communities, and we can certainly go back if there are questions that arise.
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
So you said the Zeltman property in the Frederick County plan is low, is residential?
Yeah, it's slated for, yeah, the commissioners at the time thought that appropriate to add a low-density residential designation to that property in anticipation of some kind of residential development occurring in the future.
But now it's back to agricultural, didn't you?
Well, the zoning was never changed, just the future land use designation.
It was just designated, okay, good, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, this is a bit blurry, isn't it? So this is the Green Valley area, this is Interstate 70 and 144 up here to the north. As we spoke last month, you know, everything in the yellow hatching is existing well and septic residential development indicated by this rural residential designation, with a few exceptions of the Harvest Ridge area and the Sam Hill area, they are on a, what we call a subregional public water and sewer system, groundwater-based, of course, but they have their own wastewater treatment plant for these two larger communities here, but everything else surrounding that is on private wells and individual septic systems. And the county has deliberately, since probably the mid-2000s, you know, acknowledged this type of land use, and has indicated through our land use plans that, you know, they didn't want that to continue through these kind of agricultural swaths here, I'll call them, you know, running north-south here. And as you can see, the zoning on the next page basically mirrors that, so everything that has the land use designation of residential, it's developed, has a residential zoning So it just shows you in relation to the town, this is Bartholomew's Road here, and this is Bill Moxley, and down here on the southern edge is Route 80, or Fingerboard Road, of course, the county boundary here to the southeast. Okay, moving on to the New Market community, this is the comprehensive plan again, and on these next couple of maps, we didn't indicate the larger projects that have recent development approvals. So the town, again, this is a bit busy admittedly, but the town is outlined in black here, then the county's New Market Community Growth Area is indicated by this red.
Wow.
So you can see it's kind of a mixed pattern, there's some existing development here, here. The town did annex these two properties on Boyers Mill Road, which is right here, this is Interstate 70, of course, and Route 75 bisecting it north-south. So this property, these properties known as, you know, a lot of times we refer to these properties as, from the historical owners' names, the Smith-Klein Farms, they have, they were annexed into the town, the town did approve subdivision plan for the 925 units here.
Holy cow, wow.
But again, to south of 70, there's some, you know, general commercial areas, areas designated for employment and industrial uses, this is the Costco distribution warehouse, this is the, the Fund Center, the Activity Center.
Adventure Park.
Yes, Adventure Park, thank you. And then Bush Creek down there to the south. So the zoning is very similar again in this area, you know, we do kind of white out the towns, we don't apply on our maps all the individual town zoning districts and the town land use designations, it would just get too busy. So again, this is all the zoning around the town of New Market, this is PUD, this is the Audubon Preserve, Zoned Resource Conservation. Again, this is split zoning, actually, this is a band of R5 residential zoning, that's been there since the 1980s, but the red is commercial, and then the purples are the industrial zoning. So you can see there's still a lot of undeveloped land that has the zoning actually in place today, so, you know, we'll see how long that takes to develop when the landowners move ahead with those plans. Okay, moving to the Lingonore community, this is kind of a sea of yellow here, this is the lake, it's a secondary drinking water source for the county, but here's the Mount Airy, excuse me, New Market we just examined, so this is Gas House Pike here to the very north, and this is Boyers Mill Road.
Okay.
It cuts through there, and the zoning map, I think, will show it a little bit better, but although, you know, there's a lot of existing developed lots that are recorded in the community, but the community has expanded, there's a subdivision approval here for the northern part of Woodridge, that's 150 units, Hampton's West has approval for 406 residential units here. Then the Town Center that's under development by the Oakdale High School, you see, the Town Center has approval for about 1,500 units, plus some commercial development there along Again, the zoning, so the, the red zoning is the PR-PUD or Planned Unit Development zoning, and the entire entirety of Lake and the entire entirety of Lake Lingonore has that. As you can see here, these are all the existing platted lots, virtually, the vast majority of those are developed, like all these lots, you can see, they're all existing here and here. But there's, again, there's still lots of land left that, undeveloped, that has zoning, like the Casey tract and the Blentlinger piece along Boyers Mill Road here. No subdivision plans have been submitted on those yet. Moving on to the Monrovia area, so this is Bush Creek here, and this is the extension of 75. Down here is Route 80, Fingerboard Road, and this is Route 75 here to the north. Again, the community growth area outlined in the red, and the Lansdale community is undergoing development right now. And then the Monrovia Town Center area is under litigation. And the next map shows they do have their zoning, it's being challenged, there's some commercial zoning here by the drag strip, and then this is well underway there about...
How many, how many units in Lansdale? I can't, I can't see it, so, is it 1,500?
1,100.
Or 1,100?
1,100.
I think so. Tim?
Yes, 1,100, that's correct.
Okay.
Tim, just in terms of overall scale, okay, in most of these, you have an indication of units, and a unit is essentially a household.
That's correct, a lot essentially.
So, if we were looking at the entire county map, what we would see is that southeastern quadrant of Frederick has by far the greatest amount of projected development, you know, vis-à-vis the county as a whole. It's adjacent to Mount Airy, it's basically between us and Monrovia, New Market, okay? So, of what's been approved already, how many collective units are we talking about?
Well, we'd have to do a simple addition from the units I've listed there.
2,500 between New Market and the, I didn't put in Lansdale.
Well, that's more than that.
So, but it's closer to, it's closer to 4,100?
Wow.
Because Mount Airy is essentially 3,500 to 3,700 households, right?
So, it's another Mount Airy, they're building another Mount Airy.
That's another Mount Airy at a minimum.
Yeah, I mean, we have the projections for all those, all those lands you saw, like here, you know, we have a projection what the zoning was, the rezoning was approved for, and, you know, estimated yields of all these properties that don't have development yet, like the Casey Blentlinger. So, we do have essentially a build-out number, but I don't have that on top of my head right now. But this gives you kind of an idea of the development potential near, you know, just to the west of Mount Airy.
Well, a picture's worth a thousand words on this one.
Yep.
And nothing's in the works as far as, I mean, I know we've beat this to death, but nothing is in the works as far as the state roads doing anything as improvement to Route 70.
That is correct.
Well, thank you, Tim. Is anything else you want to present?
No, that's all.
Thank you, and I'd like, keep this as an ongoing item though, Tim, as things change, okay? Because it's really, and also if you could keep, bring the slides through when things change so everyone else can see it.
Sure will. And just one other final note about livable Frederick, our Planning Commission did hold their public hearing, and their first workshop to review all those public comments was snowed out last week.
Oh, that's right.
So, that's going to resume next month. So, they have a lot of work ahead.
I understand.
Thank you so much, thanks, Tim, for coming. Next on the agenda?
Lights.
Yes, next, okay. We have case MA-A-18-01, Green Tree, special exception MXU-CC recommendation to the Board of Appeals. And Heather, why don't you just go ahead and submit for the record what you need to, you don't need to read us everything?
Oh, okay.
And what the process is going to be, is we're going to hear the staff report, then the petitioner will come up, and then after that, then we can have public comments. And what I'd ask, so, in the public comments, so you keep it brief and that you don't repeat what the previous person said? So, maybe different, you know, everyone has a different comment on a different topic, would be great. Okay, thanks. Heather?
Okay. Tonight's staff report is in response to a special exception request for a mixed-use development in the CC district as filed by Green Tree Property LLC. For the property located at the corner of North Main Street and Candace Drive, the case number assigned to this special exception petition is case MA-A-18-01. And I do need to enter most of the staff report in for the record.
Okay, do it.
So, I do apologize for its length, but...
Just keep plenty of water going.
For this type of proceeding. The subject property is a 12.67 acre parcel of commercially-zoned land situated along the west side of North Main Street from the northern town boundary at Candace Drive. The parcel has held a commercially, a commercial zoning classification within the town since annexed into the municipal boundary in 1995. The site is surrounded by a 6.35 acre parcel of residentially-zoned land and is also surrounded by two residential subdivisions known as Sterling Glen and Summit Ridge and Christie Acres, I forgot to include that in the report, so add Christie Acres to that. The Brown property, a 1.08 acre parcel of land also zoned community commercial, lies adjacent to the subject parcel directly to the east. Residentially-zoned parcels of land are situated to the south and southeast of the subject parcel with two of the parcels approved to operate as church facilities. While the code provisions require authorization from the Board of Appeals to develop land in the CC district with a mix of residential and commercial components, the manner in which the lands are developed with respect to the overall site configuration, lot layout, road access, open space, pedestrian connectivity, and traffic impact mitigation are implemented by the Planning Commission through the general development review processes and supplemental regulations as governed by Town Code Section 9861. The Board of Appeals may, however, attach specific conditions relating to site development to a special exception authorization to ensure that public interest is secured. Likewise, the Planning Commission may include conditions in their recommendation to the Board of Appeals. As stated before, the applicant has recently submitted a petition for special exception to establish Green Tree Village, a mixed-use development in a CC district as permitted under zoning code 11239(c12), 11239.1, and 11262(f29). Pursuant to Town Code Section 11262e, a special exception may be granted when the Board of Appeals finds from a preponderance of evidence produced at the hearing that both the general and specific standards can be met. Town Code Section 11262b requires that all special exception requests be referred to the Town Planning Commission for recommendation, and that is the process we are undertaking tonight. The Planning Commission is considering all the evidence presented in order to forward a recommendation on the petition to the Board of Appeals. Staff offers the following analysis to assist the Planning Commission in reaching their recommendation. Mixed-use development in a CC district is permitted, is a permitted special exception use subject to the following specific standards. Standard A provides that an MXU-CC shall facilitate the integrated and orderly development of commercial, office, and residential uses on vacant tracts of community commercial-zoned land in locations where high-quality mixed-use development can occur in harmony with surrounding land uses. As previously noted, the subject property represents 12.67 acres of vacant land zoned community commercial, meeting the zoning requirements of the statute. Ordinance 2017-7, as enacted, allows the consideration of mixed-use development in the CC district. A reference to the general physical boundary of the focus area for mixed-use development scenarios was included among the introductory statements of the ordinance. Specifically, the boundary referenced tracts of commercial land along the Maryland 27 corridor from the intersection at Twin Arch and Park Avenue, northbound, to the northern town boundary at Maryland 27 and Maryland 28. The subject property falls within the physical boundary described and therefore meets the standard. According to the project narrative furnished by the applicant, the project provides an opportunity to develop the northern gateway of the town in a more attractive manner than would be possible through the strict application of conventional commercial zoning requirements that currently exist on the property. In addition, the proposed project is described to provide an opportunity to transition from commercial to the surrounding residential, commercial, and institutional uses. Staff concurs that a quality mixed-use project may yield a more compatible development scenario that is sensitive to the surrounding residential land uses than a typical commercial shopping center would offer. Moreover, the mix of uses and site design sensitive to the surrounding land uses will facilitate the integrated and orderly development of commercial, office, and residential uses. In order to provide a basic overview of the development vision for the property, the applicant submitted a conceptual mixed-use site development layout as an exhibit to the special exception application. The layout reflects a predominantly residential community, very similar to the development plan for the establishment of the Green Tree Village Senior Housing Community in that 112 townhouses and a two-story commercial building continue to be proposed. The applicant describes the planned commercial uses as retail, office, and eateries. Drive-through service is also notated on the plan. The proposed architectural style of the development will be carefully evaluated during the development review phase. The applicant's narrative, however, did note that the residential elements of the project will incorporate traditional neighborhood design principles as well as traditional architectural principles. The mixed-use development process requires a pattern book outlining in detail the architectural and design details that will be implemented with the development to ensure that the project represents a high-quality mixed-use development. Staff would like to note that any recommendation of or subsequent approval of the special exception request does not constitute approval of the presented site layout configuration, number of residential units, commercial square footage, or any other site design element portrayed on the conceptual layout. Such approval shall be granted by the Planning Commission through the adopted approval process as outlined in Section 9861 and all other applicable Town Code sections. When considering the proposed conceptual layout, the existing commercial zoning of the commercial parcel plausible by right commercial development scenarios, zoning of adjacent land areas, and the mixture of existing residential and non-residential land uses in existence today, a mixed-use development on the subject property can more likely than not occur in harmony with the surrounding land uses. Based on the, above, I'm sorry, based on the above analysis, staff finds that the MXU-CC use as proposed can meet the standard. This finding is predicated upon strict adherence to the adopted code provisions governing the specific MXU-CC development policies and processes set forth in Sections 9861 and These processes include the requirement for public hearing on the proposed plan and all other development review processes as provided for in the code. Standard B provides that the vacant tract must be a minimum of 10 acres in order to be considered for an MXU-CC development. The subject site is 12.67 acres and therefore meets the standard. Standard C provides that an MXU-CC special exception shall be conditioned upon the minimum use percentage guideline set forth in Section 11, I'm sorry, 11239-1D and as determined by the Planning Commission pursuant thereto. An authorization of the special exception request from the Board of Appeals will include the aforementioned condition. Standard D provides that an MXU-CC special exception shall be conditioned on the requirements and process set forth in Section 11239-1 and Section 9861. And likewise, an authorization of the special exception request from the Board of Appeals will include the aforementioned condition. In addition to specific standards for mixed-use developments in CC districts, the following general standards must also be met as determined by the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals. General Standard 1A provides that the proposed use, including its nature, intensity, and location, is in harmony with the intent of the town master plan and the orderly and appropriate development of the given district. The 2013 Comprehensive Master Plan sets forth a goal to provide more opportunity, capability, and balance for near-term development and redevelopment efforts. The master plan supports the introduction and utilization of new zoning districts along with the utilization and existing zoning classifications in more flexible fashion in order to implement this goal. Mixed-use development, a recently adopted special exception use in the CC district, supports an integrative approach to the town's infill development efforts as also guided by the comprehensive plan. Mixed-use development in the CC district is aimed at providing a more attractive residential and non-residential environment than would be possible through the strict application of conventional zoning district requirements. The MXU-CC development also encourages the harmonious and coordinated development and a mixture of uses that take into account the compatibility with surrounding land uses. A strong emphasis is also placed on excellent design and architecture in order to protect the character of surrounding neighborhoods. Additionally, the supplemental requirements adopted relating to the special exception use require a very specific development process designed to ensure that the nature and intensity of the proposed use will result in the orderly and appropriate development of the commercial district to ensure the stated goals and objectives with respect to the special use will be met. As noted above, the location of the subject parcel has already been deemed consistent with the intent of the adopted ordinance governing mixed-use developments in the CC district. Staff finds that, in general, the nature and location of the proposed use are in harmony with the intent of the town master plan and finds that the proper code provisions are in place for the strategic evaluation to determine the appropriate intensity of the development with surrounding land uses. General Standard 1B provides that adequate water supply, sewage disposal, storm drainage, and fire and police protection are or can be provided for the use. Certification of the adequate public facilities ordinance occurs at such time as the concept plan is submitted pursuant to Chapter 25-5. Below is an overview of the general availability of public facilities noted above. With respect to water supply and sewage disposal, the project will be required to connect to the town's public water and sanitary sewer system. Related infrastructure will be extended by the developer. The proposed future development will undergo APFO certification for water and sewage disposal and will also be subject to the town's water allocation process. The current pipeline allocation for Green Tree Village approved in 2010 is 21,250 gallons per day, as listed in the 2005 consent agreement and the 2007 consent order with the Maryland Department of Environment. Well number nine, which was provided with the annexation of 88 acres of parkland approximately 26 years ago, was brought online into the town's water system in late 2004 with a total appropriation of 79,000 gallons per day, with a portion of the water supply to be allocated to the Green Tree property for future development. The actual water and sewer allocation for the project will be determined by the Planning Commission and will be factored in part by the lot yield and the commercial square footage approved during the development review process. With respect to the storm drainage, storm water management is not a component, a component of the town's APFO review, but will be part of the development review processes for the project. During the review process for Green Tree Village Senior Housing Community, the applicant entered into an agreement with the county to expand stormwater management facilities to accommodate other drainage in the vicinity. Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management will evaluate the concept and final site plans to ensure continued compliance with any previous stormwater management approvals. With respect to fire and emergency services, the concept layout was provided to the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company to determine the availability of services. Fire and rescue services are deemed adequate at this time based on the information provided on the layout. A note was provided to advise that an aerial ladder truck may be needed depending on the building heights. A more in-depth plan review will take place during the concept and final site plan phase of the project should the special exception be authorized. And lastly, with respect to police protection, police protection is a component of the APFO review process during the... review process during the development review phase. The town transitioned to its own police force on October 1st of 2017. The Mount Airy Police Department is currently budgeted to support a 10-person police force. General Standard 1C provides that the use of adjacent land and buildings will not be discouraged, and the value of adjacent land and buildings will not be impaired by the location, nature, and height of building walls and fences. The applicant of a special exception bears the burden of proving by a preponderance of evidence that the proposed use will not discourage use of adjacent land and buildings. The applicant will have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission to offer sufficient evidence that the use of adjacent lands will not be discouraged. Given the unique development review process required in conjunction with the MXUCC developments, staff anticipates that a successful site design can be achieved with input from the public to ensure compliance with the standard. General Standard 1D requires that the use will have proper location with respect to existing or future streets giving access to it and will not create traffic congestion or cause industrial, commercial traffic to used residential streets. The concept layout is proposing the site to be served by a total of two access points. A primary access point situated off of North Main Street that provides a direct access to the planned commercial center will also serve as a connection to the planned residential community. An entrance is also proposed off of Candace Drive intended to serve as a secondary access to the residential component of the proposed project. Both Candace Drive and North Main Street are collector roads and are not classified as local residential streets. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission consider as part of its recommendation carrying forward the conditions stipulated under Case MAA0108 that would prohibit the extension of Scotch Heather Avenue from the Summit Ridge development to this project. And one additional note, this was not only a condition that the Board of Appeals required, this actually originated from the Annexation Resolution #2 that annexed in the power line easement as well as the 6.35 acre parcel, so that is actually a condition of the annexation of land. The adequate public facilities certification for roads and traffic control devices will be first tested during the concept plan development review phase. Based upon the findings in the Maryland 27 corridor study, the town is aware of the current level of service failures that occur at the intersection of the Maryland 27 and Maryland 808, I'm sorry, occur at the intersection of Maryland 27 and Maryland 808 during peak trip hours. Staff anticipates that regardless of the manner that the Green Tree property is developed, traffic generation as a result will add to the existing congestion at this intersection. A traffic study will be required at the concept plan stage of the development review phase in order to determine the level of impact that the proposed project will have on the existing and planned intersections. Staff anticipates that associated improvements will be required in order to mitigate the traffic impact to address congestion. General Standard 1E requires that the specific standards set forth for each particular use for a special exception may be granted, have been met, except in the case of non-conforming structures where the board determines that no adverse impact will result. The specific standards have or can be met with the appropriate development of the site and review of all applicable site development standards during the concept and final site plan review stages and subsequent approval by the Planning Commission. And lastly, General Standard 2 requires that the applicant for a special exception shall have the burden of proof, which shall include the burden of going forward with the evidence and the burden of persuasion on all questions of fact which are to be determined by the Board of Appeals. Staff finds that both the general and specific standards have or can be met with the appropriate development of the site and all applicable site development standards during the concept and final site plan review stages. This finding is based upon evidence provided by the applicant in their justification statement as to the merits of the development, the proposed concept plan layout, and also in consideration of the requirements set forth by the development review processes and adequate public facilities ordinance. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Board of Appeals, subject to the following conditions. Condition 1, the authorization of the MXUCC special exception shall be conditioned upon the minimum use percentage guideline set forth in Section 112391D, and as determined by the Planning Commission pursuant thereto. Condition 2, the authorization of the MXUCC special exception shall be conditioned on the requirements and process set forth in Section 11239-1 and Section 9861. Condition 3, associated traffic improvements will be required as determined by the town in order to mitigate projected traffic impacts and to address expected congestion generated by the proposed development. Condition 4, the consideration of vehicular access connections shall not include the extension of Scotch Heather Avenue from the Summit Ridge development to this project. And Madam Chair, that concludes staff's analysis with respect to Case MAA1801.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here? And would you like to add anything? Take your time. It's a big room.
Rob Scranton, GT Development, Property LLC, 11175 Stratfield Court, Merrittsville, Maryland. Heather kind of stole my thunder after she read the whole thing.
She does that.
So, just a couple of quick notes, just a quick background on the property, in addition to some of the comments that Heather offered. When we purchased this property originally, it was approved for a shopping center, similar in scale to the Safeway Shopping Center, the FoodWise, or the Weis Shopping Center. At the time, there was a lot of concern about that. It had all the approvals in place. We wanted to take the project in a different direction. At the time, senior housing was booming. It was the thing to do. It qualified for that. It was favorable to the town because it was a residential use primarily, as opposed to this big-plan shopping center. That plan, a version of that plan, what you have in front of you, was ultimately approved as a senior housing project with a commercial component. Interestingly enough, it was a little before its time because it kind of was like the first kind of MXD-style project. It's designed in a traditional neighborhood design, very walkable, amenities on-site for residents, as well as the surrounding community. So, some things happened after that approval, number one being the recession, which changed our industry tremendously, primarily from a banking and demand perspective. First was obviously the banking crisis. It was, you couldn't get financing to do senior housing. It was considered outside the box. It wasn't safe, so it was very difficult to fund those projects. The other thing that happened to our company personally is we went through the fire two doors down at the same time. Our resources were committed to rebuilding what you all see today next door, Plaza Lorenzos and those shops. Subsequent to that, as the market continued to come back, senior housing again came back in a much different way. There's fewer projects, they tend to be much larger projects, but the truth is, most active adults, because it's really not senior housing at 55 and older, I'm 52, and most active seniors want to be in communities much like yourselves to visit with neighbors and friends and grandkids and whatever else, even when they're an empty nester. So, that market definitely changed. We do see, Green Tree is still a destination for a fair number of folks that want to downsize. We've had inquiries where they want to get out of their single-family house on an acre, they want to have a nice, convenient, low-maintenance home here in town still, and go buy a place at the beach or in Florida. So, I think this project will go a long way in meeting that percentage of the market's requests as well. Our vision for Green Tree going forward is similar to a project that we did in Sykesville that wrapped up about a year and a half ago. It's called Raincliff. It's a very similar layout, traditional neighborhood design, high-quality architecture, and these homes sold very successfully and continue to do so today. We actually won an award for that project from the State Home Building Association. One difference there is that was not a commercially-zoned property, so we couldn't integrate as much as Food Lion and some other people wanted to put something in part of that project. That did not carry the MXD or the commercial component to it. So, it stayed 100% residential there at the corner of Route 32 and Raincliff Road. So, I guess the only difference that we see coming out of this change of what's been previously proposed and previously approved is that instead of an age restriction of 55 and older, the residents could be any age within the community. As far as the standards, as, again, I won't go through each one of them tonight, but we feel that the project does qualify for the MXD recommendation, MXU, I'm sorry, a lot of years talking about MXD, the MXU designation, to go forward to the BZA for a higher level of scrutiny and more in-depth conversation going forward. So, we respectfully request the Planning Commission give a favorable recommendation to the BZA. Available for any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, you mentioned downsizing, except not, it's not age-restricted, so what size housing are you thinking of?
What's shown on this plan is very similar to what the previous plan was approved. There were villas, like a townhouse, basically.
Right. Okay, yeah, so 112?
There's 112 showed on that plan.
Okay, and is that the maximum that you would be proposing, 112?
Yes. That's the easy answer.
I think I saw somewhere that, something about one commercial building?
There's a, the commercial corner there, it's approximately three acres. We've shown it conceptually as a pad. We have not designed architecture for that yet. That'll come as we get the approval.
Right. So, it won't necessarily just be one large commercial building, it would be more integrated?
And again, we'll get into this, again, our vision for that is to have it not feel like, we don't want it to be a conventional strip center. We want it to have a more residential feel. There's a feel, there's several communities in Howard County and Frederick where developers have taken commercial properties and made them feel like residential. Do you still have the picture that we did of our offices? I guess you don't have that loaded for tonight.
I did not.
We'll make sure we have it if we go forward to the BZA. Our office building is in Waverly, which is a mixed-use, PUD, commercial, residential, you know, and our office building looks like a brick townhouse. So, the architecture is planned to be very cohesive with the neighborhood.
And just one more question. So, did you own the property when it was annexed into Mount Airy?
No.
You bought it separately?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks. Judy, any questions?
No, I was, you asked. You were on it. Yeah, I got it.
Any other questions for Rob? Okay.
I have a question for Heather.
Oh, sure.
Since I don't think Rob would have the answer, since, where did I write that down? Heather, do you have a copy of the Annexation Resolution #2? Because I don't think that we have talked about that before.
Number 32.
Oh, I thought you said 2. Okay, number 32.
No, I do not have that with me. I do have the minutes of the meeting that, where it was approved.
And I'm sorry, I did not print those out, Heather. I'm bringing them.
I didn't make copies for everybody, but.
I was on planning when that happened, or I remember something about that, and so I had asked Heather.
Well, I knew that in the prior approval, which is the MAA0108, that the Board of Appeals set forth these certain limitations, but I had not heard that there was, in the annexation project, that there was this specific condition.
I had not heard that, but I had heard the Board of Appeals, I knew that part.
Yeah, but that's different, because this is a new case.
Are you, excuse me, are you referring to the restriction on Scotch Heather?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that was a condition that we supported in the approval for the previous, and would so.
Right, but the previous is not this.
Correct, and we would support that as demonstrated here. We don't show that connection.
I'm more concerned about what the annexation document showed.
I don't think the annexation had any, there was no, was there mention of it?
Heather mentioned it. It was on the additional, it wasn't on the annexation for the 12.67, but it was attached to 6.35.
On the 6, or the, right, right.
And then the 4 for the power line easement.
Okay.
Mr. Butts, could you kindly, or someone, thank you, circulate that to Ms. Dixon? Dixon, Dickinson. Dickinson, there we go.
Thank you. Yeah, you can call me, Lisa. That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Any other questions for Rob?
Do you know what price range these are going to be in?
Not at this time, but Raincliff is a similar community, and those homes sold in the mid-3s to mid-to-upper 4s.
Okay. Okay, Rob, if you want to go take a seat. At this point, okay, excuse me, come on, listen. We've got to run this meeting orderly. At this point, we'll go ahead and we'll take any public comments or questions.
For this area.
We would ask that you want to form a queue right up there at the podium. You'd say your name and your address, whatever your question or comment is, and just don't repeat, and don't run, don't rush over, take your time, but just come over here to the podium.
Do you want me to available answer or?
Yeah, okay, if you don't mind.
If I were you, I would stay.
So, also what we're going to do is, if you have any questions, Rob's going to stay here to answer your questions. I don't, Rob, can he be on a mic, though, so?
He's got to be ready.
Okay, sorry, we didn't mean to kick you guys out. Sorry, Tim.
Enjoy.
Enjoy your evening.
Thanks.
Okay, so now you can hear, be able to hear Rob's comments or questions and answer to their questions. Okay.
First off, my name's Carl Munder, 2002, Philbrook Lane and Sterling Glen community. First off, I would like to thank the town and the Planning Commission for holding this meeting, even though they were not required to by any statute or anything, to invite the public to speak, is the way I understood it. Second, I would like to thank Heather Smith for indulging me with all my questions and answers, and she's been very professional with my questions and answers for that. So, I would like to say that I hope the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission would look at this and review it as a new project, even though it's based on a similarly-approved project of the age-restriction community, and it's based on, it sounds like, it looks like the site plan and stuff is based on that previously-approved community, I would like the, for fresh eyes, look as a new application, a new community, because of the age restriction has been removed from it. So, with that, also, I would like to add, maybe, see if there's a condition that can be added to the town staff report, that Sterling Glen be included in any future traffic study, mainly related to any potential increase in through traffic from Buffalo Road to Candace. For some reason, people believe that it is quicker to cut through the community than stay on Buffalo and come up Candace, for whatever reason. I know the traffic study will be looking at the intersections farther up, closer to development, but I would just want, in writing, that we will be included in any traffic study and potential increase, not knowing what type of commercial businesses would be there, just in case, say, Starbucks or some other type of potential high-volume drive-through is placed there. So, we can just say mitigate any potential traffic problems within it. And I would say the other comments, we'll be waiting for the other hearings on this if it moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Mark Richards. I live at 1002 North Main Street. And coming up on 62 years old, 61 of those, almost 61 of those years has been spent on North Main Street. When I was first born, I lived on South Main, but I don't remember any of that. My concern with this proposal is, from my perspective, most of the current neighborhood is made up of single-family detached dwellings on quarter-acre, third-acre, half-acre, and larger lots. There are 36 townhomes on North Town Court, off of North Main Street. That's the only high-density residential development in that neighborhood. In my opinion, this proposal significantly changes the character of the existing neighborhood, which has been in existence since I can remember, and my other concerns center around the public facilities. There are no sidewalks currently on North Main Street. People on North Main Street are forced to walk on the street, very close to traffic. And my other concerns center around the public facilities. There are no sidewalks currently on North Main Street. People on North Main Street are forced to walk on the street very close to traffic. Creates a significant safety issue. 112 townhouses, average couple of vehicles per townhouse, that's going to add 200 vehicles a day. I was here when 27 was North Main Street. The bypass was constructed to alleviate traffic through town. North Main Street has, or Main Street, as anybody who travels on a regular basis can realize, has become the de facto bypass because of the congestion at the signals, the traffic volume on 27, especially during rush hours. My other concern centers around, and the fire department brought up a concern about it, might need a ladder truck. That's not my concern. When Lori Ann came to Mount Airy, they had promised to provide transportation, ambulance transportation for their patients. Currently, Mount Airy Fire Department cannot guarantee advanced life support staffing 24 hours, seven days a week. The Lisbon Fire Department is often called in to supplement Mount Airy when they're understaffed at the advanced life support level or when there are simultaneous calls. Each EMS call, emergency medical services call, if it results in a transport to a hospital, takes a minimum of an hour. That's an hour for each EMS run that the citizens of Mount Airy are without ambulance protection. That's a significant concern. This is, high-density residential is only going to exacerbate that problem. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Beverness. I live in the Christie Acres neighborhood, 6606 Windridge Road. First of all, I want to thank the council again for bringing this meeting together, as the earlier speakers had mentioned. I want to echo some of their concerns quickly, that again, with the number of cars and, you know, for the sheer number of units that could potentially be going in, at least in this embodiment of the plan, again, concerns about traffic even spilling out over onto Candace Drive and Main Street and, you know, just making traffic and travel more difficult in general. I'm already concerned about the traffic light at 27 and Main Street up at that corner there. I know there's going to be a review of the traffic patterns, et cetera. I'm hoping this will, if this goes through, I'm hoping that this would lead to a dedicated traffic light to help manage some of the very rapid oncoming traffic that comes around that corner and whips around. The third point I have, and the final point, is a clarifying question, I think for the representative of the contracting firm. So this plan that we were presented, it appears to be the existing plan that was drawn up for the senior community, which is no longer what you're shooting for. Now we're looking for a non-age-restricted community. So I'm curious, how representative, do you expect this plan that we're given, based on what's no longer going to be the senior community? Do you expect it would have a similar layout, just basically replacing the senior housing with these townhomes, or do you expect some shifting around?
That'll come out during the site plan process. Right now, the plan is, as I mentioned in my points, that it is very similar already in layout to a community we've done in Sykesville called Raincliff. So the same development principles will maintain, you know, as far as some rear-loaded alleys, some front-loaded alleys or streets. So it would be, the hope would be similar, and the size of the homes, if someone asks that, would be anywhere from 2,000 to 2,800, 3,000 square feet.
And I tried to look up the Sykes, the Raincliff community on my phone there, as you mentioned earlier. I couldn't quite get the pictures, but if I got the correct community, it looked like they were two or even three-story homes. But I don't think this area was zoned, has approval for buildings to that height. Can you comment on how high these?
They're single, they would be proposed as a single-family attached dwelling, according to Mount Airy's code, a townhouse. So yes, a townhouse can be three stories, similar to other townhome communities here in town.
And this plan you have here, if I'm interpreting it correctly, it looks like the vast majority of the ground space here would be residential with what appears to be one commercial lot that's right, looks like it's nestled, at least in this plan, nestled right on Candace and Main Street. So qualitatively, do you think that would pretty much be the embodiment of what you're proposing ultimately? You know, the majority residential, and then one corner being commercial, or do you expect the ratio of commercial and residential to change?
I would expect it would stay similar to what we're proposing, given the nature of the surrounding properties are primarily residential. And as Heather noted, there's two churches adjacent as well. So the idea was to mitigate between a high-intense commercial use, like a shopping center, a CarMax, or other large-type users, to mitigate that with a residential component and a small convenience, commercial component.
Okay, so at this time, you're expecting the vast majority of the buildings to be residential?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, and next, what I'd like to add, we don't need to repeat, the comments already brought up. If you have a fresh idea or fresh comment, that would be great, but we don't really need to hear the same thing all evening long. Thank you so much.
My name is Rita Mistr, and I live on North Main Street, 707 North Main Street, and I have some of the same comments, but I'm going to give my own flavor to it. I'll try to be brief. I do support mixed-use development in existing communities for a variety of reasons, and I appreciate the thought that's gone into, over time, adjusting the plans. But I don't think that this description of the project is really consistent with the character and current use of this area of town. I want to reiterate that, I know you speak in terms of this development as being a community, but the North Main Street area of town is a community. I want to just reiterate that we are residential mostly, and whether or not Main Street is considered a connector road, it still is surrounded by residential uses. We have some public uses as well. We have the emergency services, and we have all the schools on the Carroll County Scott side, also on that street. So in particular, the idea of it being defined as just a connector road, I take issue with. I understand, and I believe that some of the thought process here is underestimating the impact of this type of development on our emergency services and our schools that serve the entire community. I don't breathe when I do this.
Okay, breathe, we need to breathe. Take your time.
All right, so I just have two more points. I just would, in, as this goes forward, I really would like further consideration and additional consideration for the planning commission to acknowledge that. And I would also urge you to reconsider that the only way to mitigate that type of impact is really more connector roads. There's no way to wall these things off. And I know the tendency in this town that I've seen over and over is to push it on to somebody else. This is Main Street. This is a historical part of Mount Airy, if people do consider this a community or a town. And more roads, I think I would urge you to reconsider opening up Scotch Heather. I don't understand the rationale for closing all of those areas off and dumping more onto a small road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lyndi?
Yes.
Can I pose a question to people who are?
Sure.
I just, I, just sort of in response, just for context to what Rita was saying, I'm curious whether people would prefer commercial as it's currently zoned or this type of mixed use. Because it is zoned commercial, except for a very small piece. So I just want people to keep that, keep that in mind when you're thinking about, what do you want there? Do you want a strip mall of just commercial or some kind of, of course, we'd have to prove it, but, you know. Or do you want some type of mixed use? I just wanted to kind of give that context. Hi, Chris.
Hello. Chris Spar, I live at 707 North Main Street. And before I talk, I just wanted to give you folks some front handouts. These actually are several years old. There's two figures and then a kind of a, these are the ones I'm going to talk about. So if you could, this was for about five years ago. Anyway, I'm here tonight to request that staff recommendation number four be reconsidered. I do appreciate that you put a lot of effort into it, but as I speak, you'll get to hear why I am making that request. So I'm actually requesting that we do put the Scotch Heather connection to Candace Drive back in. That was in town plans a while ago, like from the 90s. It was actually taken out in 2002, just so everybody knows. And I do have the minutes from the meeting when it was taken out. I lived on North Main Street at that time. I didn't even know about the meeting. I would have been there raising my hand, "Don't take that road out! Don't take that road out!" Because, once again, as Rita said, it's human nature. We don't want anybody to drive in front of our house, but we forget that we drive in front of other folks' houses. So when we push all the traffic off one spot, it goes somewhere. We're all car users. I'm the biggest car user of anybody here. So it is a time to revisit, I think, that idea of having a connection between Summit Ridge and Candace Road. I think the deletion was made at the time with the thought that Candace Road, which was not very long at that time, and I think was just being connected down to Buffalo Road, would take the place of the, "Oh, we don't need that connector. Candace is going to do that." I would argue to you that that was a mistake in determination. As great as Summit Ridge is, and lots of great people live there and everything, Summit Roads itself, or Summit Ridge itself, has about 200 houses, give or take. Probably generates on the order of 1,000 to 2,000 car trips per day. Now, most of those go towards the south, towards the Main Street, Watersville intersection, et cetera. But a decent portion of the folks coming out of Summit Ridge also then actually go south to then go north. So by not having that connector road between Candace and Scotch Heather, what we're doing is we're forcing literally thousands of miles of extra driving every year for folks from Summit Ridge who, instead of being able to go right, when they want to go north to Westminster or whatever, instead of being able to go right out, they first go south, they drive through that intersection where the school traffic is, where the fire traffic is, they drive up Main Street. So we're, and it's literally thousands of miles of extra driving a year by not having Scotch Heather connect to Candace. So my appeal is, let's give that some consideration again. I think this, and this is obviously the time to do that. And once again, from my perspective, taking it off the books wasn't fair, because I would have been there putting my point forward if I had known about it. And I have, some of you remember, I've been here several times over the years, raising this topic every time I get a chance. And once again, this is perhaps the most important chance I have. So, once again, so we don't have connection between Scotch Heather and Candace. Kids from Summit Ridge, when they walk to middle school, what do they do? They cross the intersection at Watersville and Main Street, don't they? The same intersection that everybody driving out of Summit Ridge goes through. So it would actually benefit, in my opinion, folks in Summit Ridge, if you had a properly designed connector road to Candace, it would actually eliminate some of the traffic that impacts your own kids going to the schools, going to the playgrounds, et cetera. The, I think, another thing to think about is that there, it would require a bridge, there's a creek there at the north end of Scotch Heather. There's actually a bridge at the southern end of Summit Ridge on Scotch Heather. So somehow, we found a way to build one bridge. I guess my thought is, hey, if we built one, why can't we build another one? And once again, I think we can help with some of the traffic generated from the good folks from Summit Ridge. Making decisions on roads is actually very important, because roads persist forever, almost. I mean, you look at roadmaps from the Civil War, and some of those roads are still there now. We've just put a lot of other ones in between them, right? So making those decisions on laying roads out is a very, it has a long-term effect on an area. And something like this, if we miss this opportunity now, once again, we're literally forcing thousands of miles of extra driving right here in our town for decades or centuries, probably, by not having that connector road. And it's, once again, it's kind of human nature for us to forget that when we drive, we're traffic also, right? So from my perspective, since I'm not a lifelong Mount Airian, as some are, but did get to be here long enough to go see a lot of change. And so as much as I appreciate the ballfields at Summit Ridge, and my kids play with them, and I like a lot of those folks, I got to see that change. I got to see that traffic, and it affected us. And I don't feel like there shouldn't be traffic on Main Street. Of course there should be. I live on Main Street. But I do want the traffic to be distributed in an optimal way, and not to just burden some folks at the expense of others. So I guess, at its simplest, my request is please reconsider staff recommendation number four. I do, it's physically possible to put a connector road in there. I do think it would eliminate a lot of the traffic from Summit Ridge that's forced to go south instead of north. I think it would probably be, could be done a way that would be harmless to Summit Ridge folks, depending on how you lay the road out. Summit Ridge itself is kind of an inefficient place to drive through. I don't cut through it normally. It's, you know, too many stop signs and stuff in the way. And actually, by putting a connector road at the north, there's actually some equity that would occur to within Summit Ridge itself. The folks in the south end of Summit Ridge can't park on Scotch Heather, right? Because everybody's driving down there. Folks in the north, the north end of the road, it's peaceful, quiet. They don't have to worry about anybody going out in the road. So this would actually, in many respects, I think, provide more fairness within Summit Ridge itself. So that's my request. Please reconsider staff recommendation number four.
Thank you. And ma'am, you're the final, this is the last one, unless anyone else, okay, hold.
I'm Barbara Gardner. I live at 6624 Windridge Road in Christie Acres. My concern is that when we had Sterling Glen built, we had a state official come out and talk to the 100 people, or 100 homes in Christie Acres because of how they were going to build Sterling Glen on blasting. And that can affect our wells. I know we're not part of the town, but we're not even included in this report.
That was, there are.
That was a horrible, you know, I have love for Christie Acres.
You grew up there.
I grew up in Christie Acres, so. So we are concerned with the traffic. We're concerned if it is a commercial site with the lighting. We're concerned with, how are you going to, the two entrances or exits from that development is one on Christie Acres and one on Main Street. The one showing on the map comes right out at Windridge. Is it going to be a four-way stop sign there? Is it going to be a traffic circle? Are you going to have, you know, stoplights up there? It's hard sometimes for us to get out of the neighborhood as it is. So they are some of our concerns. But the most important one is the water. When you start using that well, how is that going to affect the groundwater that we're all on? We're still on well and septic. And the other thing is the lighting, you know, if you have a commercial site there, is it 24/7 lighting? You know, those houses are right there, and we'll be affected. I just want you to take that into, and I know we're not part of the town, but we do support this town. We all use this town. We've always used this town.
You're part of this town, even though you may not be officially defined as part of the town. You're part of this town.
We're this close to town. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So when Sterling Glen was built, did you find that your water levels had decreased?
I didn't. I know there were a couple of people that had problems. And they said the biggest thing was when they blast, the veins can crush because of, you know, resettling. So should we have the state come out and talk to Christie Acres again, or, you know, just to warn us?
I'm on my third well, and I live about 400 feet, 500 feet from the proposed site. In fact, my well now is at 27, less than 500, but off 27. So we've had a concern in the community, we've had a tremendous amount of problem with wells and septic over the years. And I want to reiterate, everybody said, but we have a serious concern. It's like, let's take, for instance, this community goes in here.
Sir, why don't you go ahead and come up, if you don't mind, come up to the mic, because no one else is going to.
For the record, you need to be on here.
No one else is going to.
Well, the one last thing I had a question about was, you said residential, commercial, and institutional use. What is institutional?
The church.
Oh, okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And sorry, if you don't mind, if he just jumps up in front of you guys, promise you'll get your speaker. He was kind of tying into what she was bringing to.
Yeah, excuse me for interrupting. My name is Bill Scally. I live at 6603 Windridge Road, Mount Airy. It's about 400, 500 feet north of the proposed project. We do have a very serious water concern in the project, and we've had it for a number of years. And like I said, I'm on my third well, which is now almost on 27, 900 feet away from my house. And there's other people in here or not in here now that's had well problem. And I guess my question to y'all, very respectively, is, let's assume that this project goes forward. And I know the town engineer, he's been very involved in the studies of the water tables and the volume of water, on and on and on. I realize that, and I've heard that. But what happens when we get this influx of these units here? And we keep saying we're getting the water from the city, which I agree, it's coming from the city, but it's also coming from wells. So my concern is. So my concern is that if we draw down these act refers to a point where we're marginal up here with our water source. Some of us have two gallons a minute, three gallons a minute, so on and so forth. But let's assume that this project, as I just said, goes on, and lo and behold, all of a sudden, we start having problems in our community with the water. We're not part of Mount Airy. I guess we are, as you just noted, we are Mount Airy, but we're not part of, we're not... Who helps us out? Who gets us the water? And that's a key question I have. Because let me tell you, to live on bottled water like we did for a year and a half is a pain, and you know what. It's not fun. And it's a concern, and when you live that, you know, you don't know, you don't know an Indian till you walk a mile in those moccasins. We've walked that mile in those moccasins, and we know. So, and then the other concern that I have with this development is that we're one of the, I wish we had the site plan up here, and this thing here, I need the Hubble telescope to read. But, coming down Candace, you do have, I think, proposed now two entrances. You have one on eight oh eight, and you have one down on Candace. We have a problem right now, and Candace has been cut through for many years. And, but we're talking about all these other subdivisions. But actually, when you come up Candace, the way your ingress and egress goes out on Candace, I can just see people now coming up and say, I assume there's gonna be a traffic light somewhere. I hope so, we're paid policemen, whatever. I can see, okay, well, I imagine most people are gonna be, when they come out of this subdivision, I'm not a mind reader, are gonna be either going north or south on twenty-seven. Okay, we know, we have, we have Main Street here going north and south. So, I'm a resident down in this townhouse, and I look up and I see the lights aren't working right, or there's a traffic jam. Well, hell, I'm just gonna shoot right on up through Windridge, go all the way through Windridge Drive, up to Windsong, and out that way. We have already enough traffic on Windridge Road. I've actually asked the police, the state troopers, when they're here, to monitor the traffic there with speeding. So it's just not these other subdivisions. We're a conduit from people going north as well as going out to alleged traffic lights that's gonna be out there. So I would appreciate there would be some consideration on that also, because there's a tremendous amount of houses in Christie Acres, Candace Acres, and then the other subdivision over there. And I live right there. I chase, I'm not a maniac, but I've chased three or four people down, speeding through the subdivision. We have little kids in the subdivision. As a resident, and I really appreciate that there would be great planning concern to this potential problem. And I don't really think it would be a potential problem. I think it's probably pretty close to reality. People using Windridge go all the way through and cut up out through Windsong. So, I appreciate your time, and...
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Hold on. We've got more people to speak. Next place?
Greg Somerville. I live at nineteen oh-six Field Brook Lane in the Sterling Glen community. I wanna start, actually, with a question. One thing that's noted in the report is that this mixed use is a recent exception to community commercial. Can you, do you know when that exception started?
Probably ingrained in our brains.
It was, it was inactive, I'm sorry, just one minute, on September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen.
It was just last fall.
Okay, so, so it's a very recent...
Yes.
Development, which means that you have the potential, as a planning board, to either knock it out of the park or really, for lack of a better term, kinda blow it, based on what people's expectations of what this can be. I think, I'm not against the, you know, the mixed use or anything like that, so... But I do have concerns. The senior community that was already approved, one of the things Carl had said is to treat it like a new project. Are there any grandfather clauses in there for stormwater management or any of that traffic, or is it all gonna be new?
He has, he has to follow the new stormwater management.
All new regulations, everything. Okay, that's great.
Is there not?
That is correct.
Okay, so no grandfather clauses. That was one question I had.
Well, I... Just a point of clarification.
Okay.
You wanna say it?
No, you may. I just wanna make sure.
Okay, so, the project was designed under the new state guidelines. So, it'll still go through the review, but the comps, the design, the type of facilities proposed are grandfathered, and it is approved, so...
So you're using all old stormwater management regulations?
No. This project was updated and approved under the new regulations.
Okay.
Rob, can you just, why don't you elaborate? What was the grandfather position, what exactly?
It wasn't grandfathered. It was approved under the new regulations, so...
But when we had approved back in, you know, the...
Two thousand and eight.
Correct.
But that's through the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, the county reviews that, and the stormwater management approval was based on what is now the current standards for stormwater management.
Okay.
A little history, Carroll County was basically ahead of the curve as far as the state regulations. The folks at Carroll County that review stormwater management for all projects basically wrote the code with the state, and they were already using a lot of the practices, the best practices. So, feel free, you can validate that by calling Carroll County.
Yeah, I ask because generally, the new regulation goes away from large, single detainment spots and emphasizes recharge facilities, bio retention...
Correct.
Facilities, which is not represented anywhere on this plan.
So, a little history on that. The large, the structure that is proposed on the smaller tract was Carroll County had requested that we enlarge that facility to provide stormwater management for the surrounding community, I believe of Christie Acres and, what's, Wendy Knowles? Is that what's called?
Candace.
Candace Estates. Those two subdivisions, when they were built, did not have any stormwater management practices, and were basically just sheet flowing off. So they had a mandate by the state, so this property, that facility, provided an opportunity for Carroll County to absorb some of the already runoff and treat it before it goes directly into the creek. Right now, it's all going directly in the creek. So this facility, as part of this project, was designed with the county to help mitigate those two subdivisions. Not the whole thing, but the portion that runs in that, into that drainage area.
Okay, so, but are there more things that you would be prone to see, like bio-retention, that are scattered through the community that are just not represented?
That is correct. There are underground facilities within the community that you don't see on that, on that pretty picture. But there are, there are, there's box of roxers, there's some trench-type drains, all below grade. So...
But that was the current, that was my main question. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. The large facility that you see on the other piece of the project, again, was designed in concert with Carroll County stormwater management to facilitate additional treatment for those two subdivisions to the north.
My next question is school allocation. So an age restricted generally does not carry school allocations? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So now by removing that, with our current situation with county where they are closing schools, what are we doing to try to push these school allocations forward so that, to minimize the risk that Mount Airy Elementary is closed? Are we doing anything?
Yeah, Rita, why don't you stand, why don't you stand up and answer that question?
That's one benefit. I would say in having... I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say that. Right now, Carroll County enrollments are stable. So I don't think there's a risk, to be honest, I don't see that there's a risk of closing schools immediately at this point. But as many people might know, the enrollments have been decreasing. And so there is, they have a very complicated algorithm that they're looking at as to which schools to close and to redistrict students, to try to maximize also special programs. So, this would actually, I think, having mixed use versus age-restricted use in a property preserve that concept of Mount Airy as a community and a growing community with increased enrollments, so.
Thank you, Rita.
So, that is being pushed to the board, essentially. Correct? The school board?
Yeah, Rita is our representative in Carroll County.
So, I mean, I know it's good for us, but the allocations aren't existing with when they're doing it.
I don't wanna give you a false assurance there. I mean, right now, what the county's looking at is if they don't get their budget increases, they still would redistrict part of Mount Airy community. Sterling Glen was in that cutoff previously up to Winfield, to Winfield Elementary.
There's a larger perspective in terms of the way we oriented the two thousand and thirteen master plan. We said, "We're out of whack with our residential, commercial, industrial ratios." Okay, we're heavy on residential, as opposed, and we need some more commercials, some more retail, so forth.
And that would be consistent with Carroll County's plan.
We also said that because we have infill areas that are, for the most part, adjacent to our downtown areas and our designated growth areas, it makes sense, rather than extending existing infrastructure, water and sewer and additional streets and so forth, unless there's a compelling reason for annexation, it makes more sense, in terms of considered development, for that to be in our infill area. Okay? And we liked the concept of MXD because that wedded together the potential of both smaller residential and commercial in the same area. And it also made it walkable, and it made it adjacent and close by both existing residential area and our downtown area. So what we were setting ourselves up for was the opportunity to improve the residential, retail, industrial ratios, but to also, to some extent, diversify our housing stock, okay? And to do it in such a way that we could still potentially, if there's residential approved, we could add potentially more families and more children to replenish age-outs in our school system. So there's a larger direction that all of this is going, in terms of our planning.
I understand that, but based on the school redistricting that was put forth last year that essentially didn't get approved, it showed that Pars Ridge would be at a hundred percent capacity if Mount Airy Elementary closed with the redistricting. So if now you're going to add a hundred and seventeen homes, that's not in their plan when they do this redistricting, right? So if the redistricting does happen, how does that affect his ability to get school allocations?
No, I don't think the county decided that way. I think the county then would redistrict. So Carroll County would only approve if they feel they have the school capacity, but they would move the kids out of town. So I think there's a couple of things to consider.
The new community would be moved out of town, or would redistrict again?
Or anybody on the fringes, you could have Sterling Glen, you know, you would impact that if that's the case. But on the other hand, I think you have to consider that if you bring more kids into the town of Mount Airy, the argument to preserve the schools here within the town may be stronger from the county's perspective.
Right, and I agree with that, but I want someone to be making that argument on our behalf, to help. Right, so I understand that. I'm just, you're talking about the ratios and what else, but I wanna make sure that the allocations are...
Rita's not our advocate. Rita is an objective person on that committee. We, the planning commission, do not advocate for the schools. That's not our role. Now, the town council you could go to, but that, we do not do that here.
So, but you can push or ask town council to advocate for that?
That's not our role.
That's not our role.
You can. You can.
Now, when we look, when we look at site plans, we're going to look to see how it will affect schools. You know, like there's a certain ratio, we're trying to keep everything in perspective, the roads. We look at everything as a planning commission to decide whether or not that site plan should go forward. Then we make a recommendation to the town council. The town council will go to Frederick County or Carroll County. If, for example, all the development that you're seeing in the New Market, Lingonore area that will spill over, you know, all those people will be using our roads, then we would go to Frederick County, and we would say to them, you know, "This is going to have a detrimental effect on our town for these reasons." And so that's when we voice those concerns. But at this level, we just look at what's being proposed in the town, then we make that recommendation to the town council.
Okay. One other, I apologize for the way I said that it's, you have a potential to not have it turn out the way we all kinda wanted to. My point was that it's, or I guess what I wanted to say is that you talk about this being the north gateway to Mount Airy, and... Well, it's in the report, so what, she said it technically.
It is. It's the northern, you're right.
So, that's what we're calling, the northern gateway. And the way the site plan is set up now is that our, the first thing you see as you turn onto North Main is a two-story commercial building. And I know that the design could look like a townhouse or whatever it is, but you're talking about a drive-through. You're also talking about pattern books, things like that. What, that pattern book, essentially like a PUD, is that the way it will be done? I think is probably one of the most important things that needs to be vetted.
Yes, we all agree on that one. We agree.
You know, the high-visibility lots, things like that, and what that commercial space will look like. 'Cause as a Sterling Glen resident, that's the first thing we see as we turn in if we decide to take our life in our hands and turn onto North Main, coming north.
See, there you go. He's turning. Bob?
And I just want you to be aware that the relationships that we'll need when these issues arise in Frederick County and Carroll County, we already have relationships with the elected bodies and all of that in both Carroll and Frederick. And we actually have a group of a couple of people here that attend Carroll County Planning, Frederick County Planning meetings. We're working on a regional approach to planning. So all of these relationships are already there. We don't wanna be, you know, running around trying to meet people when they're cutting schools. We wanna have an impact before that. And so, you know, we're very proactive on this.
And if I could just interject a thought, 'cause, 'cause one of the things that you said is either this could turn out really great or it could be a big bust, okay? And so I wanna give you a little history is, when I first came on the planning commission, I'd done a stint, took a break, came back on, and the big discussion was this new zone, which was mixed, you know, mixed zoning, so that you had, mixed use, so that you had both commercial and residential. And it was going gangbusters. And we came real close to having that be a new zone. And all of us here took a collective breath and said, "Wait a minute. This is Mount Airy. This isn't Gaithersburg. This isn't Germ Town. We have a whole different historic preservation here that we have to keep in mind." So we took a collective breath, and what we said was, because we knew that there were some infill properties that maybe would be conducive to this type of zoning, we said, "The developer could come in front of the planning commission and propose this and get, if we propose to go forward, get a special exception to finally go forward, so that they would be able to still do that, but we would be able to really look and see what would be happening." So, I for one wanna thank everybody for, and I know we have more people to speak, but for giving us a different insight, but just to let you know that we understand your concerns.
We live in the same neighborhoods you guys do.
Okay. The only other thing that comes up when you look at this is parking. Parking is gonna be something that you'll review as far as them meeting their parking requirements and stuff there. So I think a lot of people are concerned.
Parking is a hot topic all the time.
Yeah, I think everybody, people are concerned that all of a sudden cars will be lined down Main Street, lined down Candace, which would be problematic. So, I mean, one thing that I know Howard County did was they changed their driveway minimums so that townhouses were required, you know, were either required to make the parking area large enough outside of their garage, so that cars could be parked in front of the garage to minimize on-street parking. of the garage to minimize on-street parking. I mean, these roads with a lot of the curves, the way it's drawn here, there's going to be a lot of no parking areas based on ambulance and fire. So the concern is that all that parking that will then spill out outside of the neighborhood. So I just, that's another concern that I know a couple of people have brought up, so.
And that's a concern that we bring to streets and roads as well, because they're going to look at that, too.
Okay.
I mean, all, there's different commissions that are going to look at this besides us and that would be a concern, that we would ask for streets and roads to recognize.
Okay.
And I also want to say, I know, like, some people in here, I'm a little bit older, so I've lived here a little bit longer, you have to become an, an advocate for what you would like to see as, as far as the schools and stuff. The elected officials and the officials in the town can only go so far. You, you as a citizen, also have to be active in helping them to determine that our schools are important or that they shouldn't close the schools. The more people that go to those meetings and the more people that become vocal, the better off we'll be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, after, come on, ma'am, come on. Last call. After this gentleman in blue, there's nobody else. You better do it fast, because that's it. Okay, last call. This, this gentleman is the last one to speak. Thank you, ma'am.
I have 25 questions.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Maureen Nichols, 4209 Candace Drive. I, my property backs up to this land. I've been here since 1989. I watched Sterling Glen. I hated it when they took the road through, but if anybody can build a nice development, it would be Mr. Scranton. So fortunately, he will be the one developing, right? His piece of land.
Yes.
Mixed use, absolutely. I don't want a huge commercial bit behind me. I really don't. I don't think any of us do. Could you tell me, can you equate that 19,000 square foot commercial building to something that we can?
I can. Iliana Plaza in town has 44,000 square feet based on work floors. He's offering 19,000 based on two floors, so if you take 1,500 square feet of the footprint of that building, that's what you're going to get.
Which building?
Iliana.
Iliana Plaza.
Oh.
Well, can you repeat?
It won't be four stories tall, though.
I, I never did, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you.
The other thing, will we have a say as we go along? One, can I use the microphone, please? My, the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is the topography of that field, and it sits on the ridge of Mount Airy. So if you have a three-story townhouse, you are overlooking everything. So is it going to be built down? Will we have a say as we go? Because this is just like a concept plan, right?
Gentlemen, please, do not continue talking. Thank you. Sorry.
As, as the, as it was laid out previously, yes, it takes into consideration the topography. It's not going to be just all dead flat and it'll, it'll gently slope as the contour already does.
Okay. My last concern is this. If you, and I do not want Scotch Heather, please don't reconsider that. Don't want that coming up to Candace. But if you have the top of Candace as a town intersection, you have the bottom of Candace as a town intersection, everything in between is county. Everybody speeds up and down that 25 mile per hour road, even the town trucks, two or three times a morning, because I walk that road all the time. So who, can the town police it?
Heather?
We, we will definitely look into that. I'm certain we can definitely police the portions that are ours.
We have a police force now. But it's not a town road, I would say.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. There is a, they do have a, they do have a letter or a memorandum of understanding between Frederick County and Carroll County and the Sheriff's Department. So there is communication and cooperation between them. So we'll mention it to the town police and hopefully they'll mention it to them and also they'll kind of keep an eye on it as well.
Yes, so the only time that, if, if I have an issue, I have to call Carroll County.
Right.
Mrs. Nichols, is there a particular time more so, like, is it, is there a more prevalent of speeding during the morning, evening, or is it just any time?
Pretty much all day long, but rush hour, morning and evening is the worst.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wasn't going to hopefully be the last, since I started, I was going to finish up, but two others. One quick thing that I did forget to mention.
I walked into the bike.
Oh, I thought I was, sorry, Bob. Carl Wunder again, 2002 Field Brook Lane. I forgot to, my original intent was to just come up here and ask for one other thing in any further packets of.
Whoever's talking, please stop so we can listen to Carl. Thank you.
Any further packets of information that is distributed. I would like to see a, I guess I want to say, the site plan overlaid an aerial shot of the two plots of land, showing where everything lays out, like a satellite photo on the bottom and then the site plan on top of it. You know, like, kind of like a map, kind of, not just a site plan, because I'm concerned with the stormwater management project farther down on the six acres of land, because if I'm reading the site plan right, that six acres of, of what it lands is going to be clear, clear cut to handle the stormwater management pond, if I'm understanding, if I'm reading it right.
I, I wouldn't use the word clear cut. There'll be a portion of it that will be a pond and not, but there is also a portion, anything that's disturbed, that is not structural, will be reforested.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just trying to envision where the pond would be sitting on the six acres.
It shows it, it's just below Candace.
Oh, yeah, and I know that, but I'm wondering how it sits, how it would be situated on the six acres.
I believe that shows the contours.
Well, it shows the contours, I mean, it's not showing where, where goes on that. That's why I would like to.
Okay. There is a plan back there that does show it on, it's just not overlaid on a satellite, but it's, you can see the power line, you can see Candace Drive.
Okay, maybe I'll look.
And I believe it does have contours as well.
Okay, I'll look at that, too. I was also asked by a neighbor to mention this, too, that also might tie in to some of the other people. But the current allotted, as mentioned in the staff plan, is saved for water usage is 21,000 gallons per day. And since that was based on a age-restricted use, that is potential for more families moving to the townhouse, the water usage could potentially go up, too. I know the planning commission will look at water usage, but is there current surplus in the allotted, say, I think, the last commission meeting that I was on for water and sewer, one of this was 52,000 minus, is there enough surplus, I guess, in the current town water surplus to handle any increase in water from this development? Or would new water sources need to be determined, need, need to be found?
Not, not currently.
Not currently.
Not currently. Way, the way it's shown, but again, we don't have a site plan, so things might change from what, what you see on that, that exhibit.
Okay.
But we would, if, if we took, because a senior home is only half the water use of a, you know, we'd have to evaluate it once we get that site planned.
The finalized site.
And, and, and they have to go through, isn't that in your report, Heather, that they have to go through?
Yeah, the water allocation.
The whole water allocation process, again, anyway.
But aren't they, I mean, I know it's late, Lindsay, so I'll, I'm trying to keep it under two minutes, but I just got a question, another, maybe I should ask Heather, but isn't, I thought I did ask you, but isn't your report also saying it's grandfathered in already, they are already allocated, say, 21,000 gallons? So would any additional use that was required would have to go through?
They'd have to go through the process.
For additional, beyond the 21,000 gallons?
For everything. So what will happen is, with the submission of a concept plan, Mr. Scranton will submit a water allocation permit for however many gallons per day that's needed to fund the project. And then when the town engineer does his analysis, he will, he will notate in there that there is a pipeline allocation already attached to the property for 21,250, and it will come out of, you know, it'll be supplied by the pipeline.
Okay.
And then any additional water that needs funded, the town engineer will make a recommendation as far as how that additional water supply would be funded, or if it's available.
Found, okay.
Okay?
Okay, I think, I think I got that now.
Does not contain like a 12%.
Drought ratio, which is factored into available.
So there's a, so a lot of 12% in there, that's an O grade, so.
Okay. And one final question that I was going to mention, but since they seem to delve off the, other people have delved off, I was going to mention it during one of the other planning sessions on site development, but one edification that I picked up also on the site plan, that there's a lack of park space within the site plan, particularly tot, tot lots and stuff, with increase and potentially, with the removal of age restriction on it, more families could be moving in. So I believe there should be additional parkland put into the development to.
They're going to have to meet all of the requirements, like, regardless of what's on this.
Okay.
They're going to have to meet every requirement that we have from.
This is a concept right now.
I know.
We haven't, we haven't seen anything that he's going to do and as he goes through.
And they'll be bringing that back, and you can come to every meeting and every hearing and, but, but yeah, it's, they're going to, if this, if this goes through, then, then they're going to have to do everything that's required.
No, we're all looking on the parking records board and the water and sewer board.
I'm sure that you will be at all, all the, no, I mean, we want that, we want it.
All right, just wanted to mention that, too.
All very good points.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
So you're our last. And after this gentleman, we're going to take a 10-minute break just to, like, stretch our legs and maybe wake up.
I just wanted to have the last word.
Yes, sir. Go for it.
Actually, I had two points. Carl took one about the parks. I'm really concerned about that with the neighboring areas.
Your name, name and address?
Oh, Ian Adams, 6600 Windridge Road, so I'm directly across the street on the corner to this property. But my other concern is the use of the residential property downstream of this site for stormwater retention. I think it sets a very bad precedent to take a commercial property and be able to develop the entire property from edge to edge, just because you can then buy residential property and dump your stormwater into it and everything that goes along with that, right on top of wells and septic and into other people's backyards, even into the backyards of people that live in Summit Ridge, to take that water and just dump it somewhere else so that you can develop the entire property. So I want to take, I want the board to take into consideration the use of that property for stormwater and perhaps even take it back on to their own property and use the residential for what it was actually zoned for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're going to take a break. We'll, we'll resume at 9:12, so just stretch your legs, so you can feel free to talk as loud as you want. Thank you.
I would have thought they would have deliberated, you all would have deliberated. Unless you're letting people. Unless you're.
You guys thought to make a recommendation.
Actually, I had two points. Carl took one about the parks. I'm really concerned about that with the neighboring areas.
Your name and address?
Oh, Ian Adams, 6600 Windridge Road. So I'm directly across the street on the corner to this property. But my other concern is the use of the residential property downstream of this site for stormwater retention. I think it sets a very bad precedent to take a commercial property and be able to develop the entire property from edge to edge just because you can then buy residential property and dump your stormwater into it and everything that goes along with that right on top of wells and septic and into other people's backyards, even into the backyards of people that live in Summit Ridge, to take that water and just dump it somewhere else so that you can develop the entire property. So I want the board to take into consideration the use of that property for stormwater and perhaps even take it back on to their own property and use the residential for what it was actually zoned for. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're gonna take a break. We'll resume at 9:12. So just stretch your legs. Feel free to talk as loud as you want. Thank you.
If we cannot, if that cannot be changed, is that there's still a connection through for bikes and walking?
Pedestrian paths, yes. I totally agree on that one.
Because it's a safety issue already and with all these additional housing and traffic and commercial up there, to not have some way for all those kids who live up there to be able to get through is just really...
And I agree, a pedestrian path.
And I think the whole thing, you know, it's like Bob's all worried about the neighborhood. It's like, well, they're all neighborhoods. You know, the neighborhoods up there are neighborhoods and they're gonna be impacted by traffic. Main Street's gonna be impacted by traffic. And as Chris said, most of Summit Ridge is already impacted by the traffic of all those people going through Summit Ridge. So we just have this little area that doesn't have to experience any traffic. So I just don't see it.
Recommendation number three, that can still contain the consideration of the connection of Candace and Scotch Heather, right? I mean, it allows us to assess the traffic impacts, which could involve connecting those two roads, right? So, well, instead of, I don't know if you disregard number four and maybe we can lump it into three and make it the larger assessment of the traffic study?
And if the annexation states that you can't use it, then it's a mute point and we don't have to worry about it. But if it's not, it's something that can be considered with all of that.
What does the annexation say we can't use? Is it the 12-acre parcel?
When the 6.35 and the four-acre utility easement were annexed, they were looking at the Green Tree project all collectively. If you note the other conditions in that motion, the unit yield couldn't surpass, I think it was like 159 units or 100... And I apologize. No, it's okay. I got you. So when they added those additional 10 acres, give or take, they were attaching the conditions to the 12.67-acre portion upon the development of it. So they refer to it as the Green Tree property. So it's a little convoluted, but the residents of Summit Ridge did come out, you know, to speak about the development of that.
Apparently, some other people didn't get notice. I've been hearing about this for years.
So have I.
I cannot take the blame for that.
We'll blame you for that, Heather.
So should we give ourselves a month?
I don't think we have a... Heather, I don't think we have... We have to make... I mean, Bill was asking, can we give ourselves a month? But you're telling me we do have to make a recommendation tonight?
A recommendation is required if there is information that you need in order to make a recommendation definitively. I don't know that there's anything precluding that. But I would be very specific about the information it is that you need.
Look, jump. I kind of... What Heather said, as far as, because we have the number three, the associated traffic improvements, and to leave off four and then we find out what happens. If we know we can't open it up to vehicular traffic, maybe we can at least do it for pedestrian. But I think, because it's gonna come back to us and we're gonna have to do in the site plans and the concept plan and everything. And if we can do it, I would rather do it then and leave it off at this point.
This approval just allows for us to say, we approve him with these certain things to go forth to become from commercial straight to mixed use.
To go to the Board of Appeals.
For the Board of Appeals to go from commercial to mixed use.
Right, pretty much.
You speak towards the land.
But the concern I have is the people up in Christie Acres and their wells and the impact on their wells.
So how do we incorporate that in there too?
First Roxanne, then Bob.
Okay, so the only reference that I have is when the gentleman behind the church. When he, okay, when he lost his will. And the town at first said they were not going to give...
That's right.
But the state of Maryland came in. Barney, correct me if I'm wrong, how this worked. The state of Maryland, and they applied to MDE and they were brought into the town for the water.
And it took them months.
Yes, it did.
And they had to hire a lawyer.
And they had to pay for the connection.
Yeah.
They had to pay for the connection, so...
But in that instant, it's just like their well happened to go dry and it's not like there was any, you know, thing that we know of that we had approved that caused it, unlike in this situation.
I understand that. And I'm concerned about that too, but...
Okay, Rob, you wanna answer that question?
He's still here.
He's still there, of course.
I didn't see him. I was looking over there.
Rob Scranton, GT Property Development, OLSI. First, the well issue. There won't be any new water source associated with the project on site. This project, when we acquired it, had already provided well number?
Nine.
Nine, and it's been pumping for 20?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years. So this, we're not gonna drill a new well. We're not gonna draw down around these residence homes. So I think that any well failures that would happen would not come from this property and this project. So again, as you said, the other one went dry. You can't definitively say... My well went dry at home, just randomly. So, but to clarify, that there won't be a new water source that will impact this area exactly.
Are you saying you're not gonna need more water?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is the water that's been provided to date for this project has been in use for 24 years.
Right, right.
Does that mean there's an existing surplus to the town already, right now?
Yes.
To accommodate that.
Correct.
And so if you take 112 units and divide it by 21,000 whatever, that's 200 gallons per household, not including any commercial property at all. So what's the average water usage for a town?
Sir, you got... He needs to come up with it.
Yeah, to answer your question, we were short back 10 years ago. And that's why we were under consent order with MDE to find new water. For, not that we were short at that very moment, but we had already approved hundreds of homes that we didn't necessarily have enough water for. So we had to, you know, make up for that. The well that came in that made up the majority of that is located on South Main Street. So where we're drawing extra water from an aquifer, which is a completely separate aquifer from where, you know, this development is, we're drawing more water down there. So again, kinda like what Rob's saying is we're drawing more water out of the ground total to be able to take care of this development and other developments that we had already approved, but it's not coming from that area. So if that helps.
Well, what someone spoke about wasn't because of you taking their water.
It was blasting or something.
It was because of blasting and things like that that was disrupting their water supply.
Only thing, as a developer and doing it for a long time, any blasting company, they monitor the impacts of any blasting that's required, very heavily regulated by the state.
So they would be responsible.
So if we had to blast, it would be very, very contained, regulated. And as far as I know, there was no failures that were connected with Sterling Glen. I don't know if that was the reference, but I developed that. As far as I know, there were no claims made against the blasting company that did the work there. So that was the one thing. So the water, as far as dry wells, this project, as Barney said, is drawing from other sources that are already in existence. We're not gonna go poke holes up on the ridge. Second thing is, again, to kinda bring it back, a lot of the issues that you all are talking about, that the public has raised, all great issues, great concerns, but they're all site plan issues. And I go back to the four years we worked on MXD. And at the end, it was like, why send it to BZA? Because we just wanna roll up our sleeves and get to work. Unfortunately, when we did the text amendment, we felt we wanted to build in that other level. So all these are great discussion points and they will be addressed as part of the regular process. But again, I think what we're looking for tonight is to get to the next step.
Can I ask one more question of the engineer? And was this gentleman's reference back here, the one who had the last word back there? About the retention pond and whether that impacts other people's wells, if all that...
No, so the whole purpose of the stormwater management is to actually protect surface water and ultimately groundwater. So water that right now is flowing out of Candace Estates and Christie Acres that's not being managed, that's dumping, whether it's going down the road, in the storm drains dumped directly into that waterway that goes down between, I think Ms. Nichols' house or over in that area, and then ultimately down the drainage.
So that water's still not being managed?
No, that water's not being managed. All that water that's currently coming through there will go through this pond and be treated.
How's that gonna get to your pond?
It's already designed to capture it.
It just wasn't a pond before.
Right now, it's just a ditch. Well, it goes down the roads and then it goes into storm drains, which dump directly into the stream and they're not managed.
And now it's gonna dump into this?
Correct. That water will be diverted into the pond for treatment and then discharged, and slowly. So it'll go out, you know, at a very controlled... So in large water events, you don't have a big gusher going down through there.
Yeah, as it filters down through.
And there'll be recharge as well.
Gets out the particles.
That pond is designed for recharge and large storm mitigation.
Oh, I have another question, Rob. See, in the master plan, we've talked about alternative housing. What do we call it? What is the name we have for it? Housing, it's not options, it's like...
Diverse in housing stock.
Diverse housing stock. Now, the housing out of, I forget the name of your place, but anyway. You know, we're looking for, I think, housing, some of the housing stock to be for first-time homebuyers, young families. But you're talking, you said, 350 up to 400,000.
No, I was asked, what is houses selling for at the other, and that's the only comparison I could make.
Oh, well, is that what you're thinking?
300,000 of these right here.
No, I said that these are similar to the one down there. I don't know what they're gonna sell for yet, but they're gonna be similar to those there. That's what those are sold for. But it's not gonna, I mean, the idea here, someone asked about low-income housing. It's not projected to be a low-income housing.
Well, we want, I mean, people get all worried about low-income. There's gonna be no public housing. And, you know, public housing is done by housing authorities. We're talking about affordable housing, teachers, firefighters, you know. And it doesn't sound like if it's 300,000 to 400,000, that's not affordable town...
came in that made up the majority of that is located on South Main Street. So where we're drawing extra water from an aquifer, which is a completely separate aquifer from where, you know, this, this development is, we're, we're drawing more water down there. So again, kind of like what Rob's saying is, we're, we're drawing more water out of the ground total to, to be able to take care of this development and other developments that we had already approved, but it's not coming from that area. So if that helps.
Well, what someone, what someone spoke about wasn't because of you taking their water.
It was blasting or something.
It was because of blasting and things like that that was disrupting their water supply.
Only thing, as a developer and doing it for a long time, any blasting company, they, they monitor the, the impacts of any blasting is required, very heavily regulated by the state.
So they would be responsible.
So if, if we, if we had to blast, it would be very, very contained, regulated, and as far as I know, there was no failures that were connected with Sterling Glen. I don't know if that was the reference, but, you know, I developed that, and as far as I know, there were no claims made against our, the blasting company that did the work there. So that was the one thing. So the water, as far as dry wells, th- this project, as Barney said, is drawing from other sources that are already in existence. We're not going to go poke holes up on, on the ridge.
Right, right.
Second thing is, again, to kind of bring it back, a lot of the issues that you all are talking about, that the public has raised, all great issues, great concerns, but they're all site plan issues. And, and I go back to the four years we worked on MXD, and at the end, it was like, why send it to BZA? Because we just want to roll up our sleeves and get to work. Unfortunately, when we did the text amendment, we felt we wanted to build in that other, that other level. So all these are great discussion points, and they will be addressed as part of the regular process. But again, I think what, what we're looking for tonight is to get to the next step.
Can I ask one more question of the engineer, and was this gentleman's reference back here the last, the one who had the last word back there, about the retention pond and whether that impacts other people's wells, if all that, your water goes into the?
No, so, so the whole purpose of the stormwater management is to actually protect surface water and ultimately groundwater. So water that right now is flowing out of Candace Estates and when, Christie Acres, that's not being managed, that's dumping, whether it's the, going down the road, in the, the storm drains dump directly into that waterway that goes down between, I think Ms. Nichols' house or over in that area, and then ultimately down the drainage.
So that water's still not being managed?
No, that water's not being managed. All that water that's currently coming through there will go through this pond and be treated.
How's that going to get to your pond?
It's designed, it's already designed to capture it.
Which just wasn't a pond before.
Right now, it's just a ditch.
It's running down the street.
Well, it goes in, it goes down the roads, and then it goes into storm drains, which dump directly into the stream, and they're not managed. So.
And now it's going to dump into this?
Correct. That water will be diverted into the pond for treatment and then discharged and slowly. So it'll go out, you know, at a very controlled.
And be filtered.
So in large water events, you don't have a big gusher going down through there.
Yeah, as it filters down through.
And there'll be recharge as well, correct.
Gets out the particles.
That, that pond is designed for recharge and large storm mitigation.
Oh, I have another question, Rob.
Sure.
See, in the master plan, we've talked about alternative housing, what do we call it? Is there a name we have for it? Oh, housing, it's not options, it's like.
Diverse in housing stock.
Diverse housing stock. Now, we're, now, the, the housing out of, I forget the name of your place, but anyway.
Three fifty-nine.
You know, we're looking for, I think, housing, some of the housing stock to be for first-time home buyers, young families, but you're talking, you said 350 up to, into the 400,000.
No, I was asked, what is a house selling for at the other, and that's the only comparison I could make.
Oh, well, is that what you're thinking?
300, 400,000 of these right here.
Yeah.
No, I, I said that these are similar to the one down there. I don't, we don't, I don't know what they're going to sell for yet, but they're going to be similar to those there. That's what those are sold for. But it's not going, I mean, the, the idea here, I, someone asked about low-income housing. It's not, it's, it's not projected to be a low-income housing.
Well, we want, I mean, not, I mean, people get all worried about low-income. No, there's, there's going to be no public housing, and, you know, public housing is done by housing authorities. We're talking about affordable housing, teachers, firefighters, you know. And it doesn't sound like, if it's three to 400,000, that's not affordable town, you know, people work for the town, you know, something like that, you know.
The size of these, the size of these homes are typical to other townhomes within our community. So.
So they shouldn't necessarily?
Go for it, Roxanne.
Okay, so when you look at the, look at the housing that we have, or the cost of the townhouses that are here, we're looking in the high twos. Right now, this, in most loan companies, and also in the state of Maryland, there are special programs. One is called Homes for Heroes, one is called Home, I can't, Home, I can't remember it. It's a Fannie Mae product. But there are also programs to help these people to get into these houses. The one thing we can't, you can't do is, you can't say, well, we, we want to start the houses at 150,000.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
So, but, so we're looking, we're looking at the mid to, mid to high twos is kind of, is our basement, okay, in, in the, for the housing industry. And it, it's unfortunate, it's good and it's bad. It's unfortunate because of where we live and the people moving in, the seller, the, the buyers coming in, it's kind of, you know, demand, supply and demand. So when they come in, they, the, the buyers, if they want the houses and want a seller's market right now, the price is going to go up, and we can't really, it's, it's hard, we're stuck in a.
It's more of a general approach that I'm trying to get here, not like being in some exact.
But there are, there are ways, there are ways to help people that li, that live here to, to have a house here, that want to stay in the town.
Rob, can I ask you a question?
She says it's okay.
As long as you, as long as you stand up and at the podium, and, and that's the last one though, please. We need to keep this ring.
I was curious, since I didn't have my hearing ready turned on. I, I thought originally you said that, that tonight that these houses were going to be approximately, or these townhouses are going to be 3,000 square feet?
I said two to, two thousand.
Two to three thousand.
Two to three, so there's a big, a, a big difference between 2,000 and 3,000. Even a, even a 2,500 square, square foot townhouse, I don't see how you could sell it for 200,000 and 225,000 dollars, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. And, and, so would some be smaller than others?
Yes, they're, yes.
Okay, so you'd have smaller.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, so let's.
In Raincliff, in Raincliff, and again, this is going to come out as part of the pattern book. Raincliff, Raincliff had a, a variety of sized units which helped with, you know, a lot of townhouse developments. It's all one price point. This one will anticipate multiple price points.
That would be good.
Okay. Any other questions for Rob? I think you can sit down now, hopefully. Okay, back to, yeah. Okay, back to what do we want to do? Do we want to make a recommendation? Do we want to, if we need additional information, we have to be specific forward?
So if, if we are not precluded from, you know, further consideration or specification, if all we're doing is saying yea or nay, then I'll send this to BZA, okay? And, and that would be an appropriate step, obviously, and we would be following the, the correct procedure. And if that doesn't preclude us, then at the site plan level, any of these other considerations.
It's all ours.
Okay, it's all ours. If we need to have, you know, extra due diligence and so forth, we'll have that opportunity. Then I don't see any downside to go ahead and, and allowing this process to go forward.
With taking out number four.
I like the way Scott's recommendation, though, of removing number four, assuming that it's included in number three, and we, yes, and so we just remove number four, but everything else stays. I like that.
And we do, I mean, then we also do continue though, looking at the annexation agreement.
Yep, yeah, I will, I will, and I can report back to that.
Mm-hmm.
I also just wanted to, I had my notes. Mr. Munder had asked if perhaps it could be memorialized that the impacts to Sterling Glen could be part, become part of the traffic impact scope. And I didn't know if you wanted to, I just wanted to bring that up. I had that.
Would, would that, I mean, that would, that would be fairly obvious that it would be part of number three, right?
You would think. I would think.
It wouldn't?
Well, then that's less specified.
No, please. Scott, Carl, no, no, Carl, no, down, back.
Not.
Yeah, I, I think all the neighborhoods up there would want to be considered. I mean.
Wouldn't say all the neighborhoods.
Yeah, which they are, really.
Surrounding neighborhoods?
Yeah, I mean, they're all.
The scoping session, he would, you know, he requested that the, the traffic impact scope included Sterling Glen.
So can we say surrounding neighborhoods? Because I, I don't think we should call it Sterling Glen.
No, no.
Well, and there was another point to Windridge and going out to Windsong, so.
So surrounding affected neighborhoods?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
That kind of gets everything. Okay. Okay, who wants to tackle making a motion?
I can do it.
Good for you, because I don't think I can.
I think I can do it. Okay, so I recommend that the commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Board of Appeals based on staff's, in agreement with staff's recommendations, subject to the following conditions. One, the authorization of the MXUCC special exception shall be conditioned upon the minimum, minimum use percentage guideline set forth in section 112 dash 39.1D, and as determined by the planning commission pursuant thereto. The auth, number two, the authorization of MXUCC special exception shall be conditioned on the requirements and process set forth in section 112 dash 39, oh, yeah, dash 39.1, or dash point one. I think it's point one. And section 98.61. And associated traffic improvements will be required as determined by the town in order to mitigate projected traffic impacts and to address expected congestion generated by the proposed development as to all surrounding neighborhoods and any other conceivable area.
Yeah.
That's good.
Anyway, anyone want a second? Okay, Judy second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you all for standing with us for this lovely evening. You're welcome to stay with us a little longer. Yes, yes, sir?
Just for, if I may, before.
Wait, hold on, hold on.
The next, just while everybody's still here, the next step is a Board of Appeals' public hearing. I don't have a date scheduled for that. You will see new placards go up, we'll take the existing ones down. I'm try, I'm going to try to get them in yellow, this, so you can just differentiate. So just stay tuned for that. Adjoining property owners and homeowners associations will receive their, the notices again. So just stay tuned. And if you have any questions, if you haven't seen anything, just feel free to give me a call at Town Hall. Yes, hi.
Is there a closing time for you?
It's going to be, I would say upwards to a month. Advertising requirements are at least 15 days advance notice. I haven't even reached out to get dates from the board. And we have a lot of other, like, budget work sessions, so it's just finding a date. So, okay? All right, thank you.
The Board of Appeals, I'd be delighted.
Thank you. And I don't, we haven't forgotten about you, sir. We just want to let everyone leave, and then we can.
Thank you for humoring me. A friend of mine is on the State Board for Emergency Services and, and the Police Department. They've been having real issues with difficulty of having sufficient services and trained personnel. It's become a serious problem throughout the state. And every time that we're adding additional housing and, and areas, it puts more stress on the services that we have. And he is saying that what we really need to do is to really drive, put out some drive to get more people, to get the training that takes time, and the funding to pay for the training, and to recruit more people to do it. And they're pushing for more paid positions, because it's a serious problem that's ongoing right now. And I just wanted to throw that out there since we're talking about.
I appreciate that.
Can you put that, that gentleman in contact with us, so we can have him come and speak to us?
I'll try that, yeah.
And we can look into it and see if we can't then, if need be, make a recommendation.
That's to be on what day of the week? Same as this, on a Monday, or what?
We always meet the last Monday of the month.
Last Monday, sure.
Or you can reach out to town staff.
His name is Don Fair. That's his name, Don Fair.
Well, again, I can say quickly, we have an adequate, all the facilities.
Mon area's got a good record, I know that already.
We have, for every 1,000 citizens, we're supposed to have a policeman. We have budgeted 10 policemen right now for 10,000 citizens. We're in the process, they want a mix of old line officers with, with skills and people fresh out of the academy. So we're getting a good mix.
And I'm not complaining, I'm just drawing attention to it, you know.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you, sir.
Our senior population is going to grow over time.
It's not just the.
Okay.
It's the EMT.
Okay, let's go on the next one. We've, but killed this one to death. Okay, so next, on a site, on site plans, AP-15-0068 lot eight, lot 12A and remainder, Twin Arch Business Park Section 15, I guess that's four, amended plat. Heather, take it away, and whatever you can skip, feel free.
Okay, this, um, this plan should be a, a little familiar to you. It was brought to you with a, a reconfiguration and, which was approved, but back in 2016. And that created lot 12A, and then it created the portion, a remainder portion of lot 13. Since then, long story short, the Doug Full property has been removed from the previously approved plat by the Planning Commission. So the amended plat before you this evening will cause 2.2034 acres of land area to be conveyed from lot 13 to lot 12. And it will reduce lot 13 from 3.8529 acres to 1.6495 acres, which again, is found to be compatible with the la, the lots along Twin Arch Road. Staff's, uh, staff obviously supports, continues to support the conveyance of land from lot 13 to lot 12. The other sort of interesting thing about this is the amended plat also reflects the removal of an existing Potomac Edison right-of-way. It's a partial removal. And staff has confirmed that a partial release of this easement has been authorized and subsequently recorded. So we did check on that prior to bringing this forward for your consideration. And not to be too quick about this, but staff does recommend approval of the amended plat to convey 2.2034 acres of land from lot 13 to lot 12 of the Twin Arch Business Park Section 4 with the following conditions. And again, this carries over from the other approval. The remainder of lot 13 be eliminated as part of the Twin Arch Business Park subdivision, and that the applicant address all town and county.
Excuse me, gentlemen, would you please shut the door or continue down the hallway? Thank you.
Town and county agency comments. I'm having trouble focusing.
Sorry.
Um, no. So Mr. Ron Thompson is here. He is the project engineer. If he has anything additional to add?
It's very straightforward.
Not, not really, very straightforward. You proved it once before with Doug Full property part of it. That's been sold to another company, Cedar Brook. So it's just taken out of the amended plat, and a smaller lot 12A is being created, which will be consistent with a future site plan potentially coming in. We look forward to your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would, I would move that we echo staff's recommendation in terms of approval of the amended plat, really with the same wording that's here, with the following, with those two conditions, that the remainder of lot 13 be eliminated as part of the Business Park subdivision, and that the applicant has to address all the town and county agency comments and requirements.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, or Ron. Okay, next we have, sorry. Okay, we have AP-18-0017 Forest Conservation Areas E and H, and Forest Conservation Easements E and Forest Easements J, K, and L, and whatever, you know, you guys can read it. Go for it.
To simplify, this amended plat is being brought forth for approval by the Planning Commission in order to comply with the amended forest conservation plan as required by Carroll County. So per code, we, we authorize Carroll County to undertake all of our development review with respect to, you know, stormwater management, forest conservation. So this plat is actually fulfilling a requirement of Jonathan Bowman of the Bureau of Resource Development. There are areas of, there are forest conservation areas that are being modified. There are existing forest conservation easements that are being extinguished. The, the county sort of keeps track of all of the plantings and, you know, forest banking. And that is the purpose. That is why this is before you this evening. Staff does recommend approval of the amended plat to revise the forest areas and extinguish the forest easements as proposed on the amended plat submitted under file number AP-180017, as approved and required by the Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management. Essentially, they, the county wants the plantings to be completed this spring, once the snow melts. So that's why this is being brought forward. And if Ron has any additional detail, I certainly invite him to speak to it.
Ron, is there a significant amount of additional planning acreage that?
No, basically, it's bookkeeping process. The original plan, when the preliminary subdivision was initially developed, had a lot of forest conservation in some of the back areas of lots, which is not really feasible anymore. It accounts for changes in land area of development that required some additional forest conservation. Some of it was purchased off-site, and so therefore, and changes in the regulations where you could no longer plant in a stormwater management pond. So the county asked us to clean up forest conservation, make it consistent with current code, and something that they could then track when we do the, when we move forward with forest plantings. And that's really why it's before you today.
So are all of the forest plantings for back acre circle, are they concentrated in this property here?
Yes. Yes.
All right, I get it.
Cool.
I get it.
Well, assuming the snow does melt, can someone make a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation. I re, I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the amended plat to revise the forest areas and extinguish the forest easements as proposed in the amended plats submitted under file number AP-18-0017, as approved and required by Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management, and that the applicant also address all final town and county agency comments.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Yes, run while you can, go. Okay, turning over.
Had enough fun.
Turning over the page now. Okay, under new business, we have the 2018 water allocation cycle, division of available capacity yield, we have a recommendation to town council. Heather.
Uh, no, Mr. Barney.
Oh, yes, oh, Mr. Barney, it's your job.
Hang on a second.
We'll try if we can stay awake.
So again, we're following what we did two years ago with some minor changes to that. We had originally put in 30,000 for residential, and of the Sterling Glen, the Wildwood Park 7, and the Brittany Manor, when you subtract those out, there was some left over. And we don't have any other plans for residential. However, we did have a plan for industrial, where they've just done a grading only along Twin Arch Road that potentially might need 3,500 gallons a day. And so we were looking at moving 3,500 into that category for new industrial, where we had zero. And, and then the other place where we've been using it is revitalization, moving the remainder of that into, into that category, because we went from four, in two years, we went from 4,000 gallons a day down to 1,600. So we used a good bit of that. So it kind of makes sense to put a little bit back into that.
So three-fourths of it is earmarked for priority area.
Yeah, and the priority area, the 40,000 that we had for priority area didn't change. We're keeping that, yep.
Okay, so anyone, any other questions? Okay, who can make a motion?
I move that, I'll try. I move that we approve the recommended allocations as written with the changes that Barney just mentioned.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's, that, that's good.
Is that a good one? Is it? Can we?
Do we have to say what you said or?
Just, just say, hey, look at the attachment here and go for this.
Yeah, what, what you can do is refer to that as exhibit one.
Page three.
Paid as recommended on page three with the recommendations made by town engineer Barney Quinn.
And, and supported by, yeah.
And then Leslie, you seconded it? Or somebody? Oh, sorry, Judy. Okay, Judy, you second. I don't know, at this point. Okay.
She backed off.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Barney.
Lindy?
Yes?
I have a resolution for you to sign.
Oh, okay.
For that.
I can't run out of here fast enough, sure.
Well, that, so I don't forget.
Okay. Okay. Next we have under unfinished business. We're getting there, guys. Two thousand and eighteen planning commission work plan goals, master plan implementation prioritization of goals. And I know that, and you guys attended the, of course, town council meeting. I know that Larry, hi, you know, presented the, the matrix that Heather's done. And I know, I understand that, like I saw that you had in the paper.
Yeah, this is started, we've started to reach out also at the, at the commission leadership level. You know, so the, just like we did during the development process, you know, that it's, it's a partnership and seeing how important our master plan is.
So does that mean, do you know if all commissions have it now?
Yeah. Well, if they don't, they will shortly because I'm visiting their individual meetings.
Okay.
And I'm carrying a copy.
So if their liaison.
Well, the liaison was also, was supposed to be.
It's going to come in from the top and bottom.
Okay.
Or the side. Through the side. You're not the bottom or the side.
No, no, but I'm saying that the real people, the folks who run the commission.
But the thing is that then they have to, and I don't know how, how this is, Heather, if they could also send this out as a, a word, I don't know if it's a word document or whatever. So rather than you entering their action plan, they, they're, they're entering it.
Right.
Okay. So it's color coded or something so we can track the changes and then get an update. Is it possible, I'm going to ask, to get a quarterly update? I don't want to ask monthly because I think that you'd be going around circles.
Yeah, I know, um, the, I sent the word document to Mr. Munder from, I'm, is he, I don't know.
He left.
Now.
We had to kick it out.
But that was when he reached out as far as the Streets and Roads Commission. So I've been talking to him about that. And Councilman Hushour is of course championing for Parks and Recs. And so, yeah, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, I can send another word document out.
Yeah, I think quarterly is best because some of the commissions don't meet every month anyway. So I think that's a, that's a good time frame.
Whatever the, the most efficient process is to capture, you know, that progress.
So then let's shoot a goal for the July meeting to have an update on this.
Sure, that works good.
Oh, right, yes. Heather's not planning to be here in July, but be here in July, so.
I will make sure that, that is set.
Larry, did you want to add anything or is this sufficient what I'm saying?
So can I just clarify roles again?
Yes.
So just, so I understand. So is our role to, to collect data and kind of report back to the town council? Or is it, this is the plan, that was our job, develop the plan? And that it's the town council's job to manage the plan and all of its commissions?
No.
That's a really good question.
It's still out.
It's our, it's our plan.
If you look at the training that, that MDP provides at the MVCAB and that brand new planning commission members have to take.
Yeah, he handed it out last time.
Yep. If, if you'll review that, you'll see.
What?
Job number one for us is to develop the master plan. Job number two is to, is to support its implementation.
So then we, we present, we get other information and we then say, hey, town council, here's where we are?
Well, we could do that, but.
Or just, we just keep on working on it.
It's to encourage, it's to create accountability partners with the commissions.
Yeah, I mean, I think the commissions, they need to do their part because we don't know their.
Right, we can't.
We don't know their part. But I think it is important for us rather than council to be.
Okay.
To implement, the ultimate implementors.
I agree with Leslie.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense? It makes sense to me. Thanks for asking that question because it's like.
But I think that's still consistent with what you were saying last month.
I'm not a hundred percent on that, but I, I think, um.
Well, just since we are the planning commission and if we took, you know, it's because it's our document. And so if we said, all right, we're, we've done.
I understand.
And remember, the two thousand and three master plan just sat on the, it never got anywhere. It just sat there. It was a joke.
In fact, when you go back and you look at the history, all of the previous ones pretty much stand on the shelf.
Wasn't there.
There were good documents that got developed, but there really wasn't a focus then of follow through on implementation is what really, if you hear when you go back.
Okay, I can get there with that.
Okay, so then, and then we'll get an update. It'd be nice in June to see, like, well, in July, to see what's.
Build out what part though.
Right, and then we can, you know, like, okay, give kudos or go chasing people.
Because in a couple of more years, we're going to be gearing up. You know, we're going to be doing.
Please don't remind me.
Everything and gearing up for the next update.
So is it fair to ask the, the town council then to be reminding the commissions and things, so like when it comes to June and the only sections filled in are the planning commission sections?
Yes, it is very much fair to go to the liaisons and the commissions and go, hey, you know, get off your duff.
Yeah, my only question is, I mean, I was given the document and I've, I've taken it to Parks and Rec beautification council. They're meeting this month, so they won't see it until next month. But, uh, but as far as, I mean, I see it as a tool to, to help us to prioritize what we need to be working on.
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's what we're going to do. My question is, I don't, I don't know that you're going to be able to mandate that to all the boards.
Well, just to say, I guess I'm saying that they're aware of it, they're working on it or it's in process or something like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what kind of update you're going to get.
I think, so if the, and as my email stated, you know, identify priorities. And even if the first step in the first quarter is to identify the priorities, then that's an update. So that, you know, the beautification or the board of Parks and Recs, they're going to be evaluating X, Y, Z over the next year. And then, you know, at least those priorities are identified. So that might be all that your first update is.
So what I see is the planning commission's role would be to just kind of poke at us and say, hey, have you done this?
I think Bill was, was planning on kind of doing that meeting with all the commissions and doing that himself.
Well, I'll, I'll encourage them, but I'm just thinking, you know, this, this next time, this year, when we have our commission information exchange, that'll be a great opportunity for each of the commissions to include, you know, with their remarks and their summaries, where they are in terms of.
And I think we need more than, what do we get, like five minutes per commission or something? So we might need ten minutes or something, or eight minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're clear on that. Okay, next we have, we're moving along here, guys. We won't be here all night, I assure you. Consideration of the planning commission rules of procedure, planning, this is something that we presented. I know it's kind of at the end of the last meeting. And what it was is, well, what it was is rules and procedures of how we act as a commission. And I know there were certain parties that didn't care for this and there are certain ones who do. So we're going to go for it and talk about it within the, how long we have, last half an hour. Hopefully not that long. So it was a draft and what Heather had found, had looked around at other, other planning commissions and found one that was similar. And so she, you know, handed out, I have two, I have a draft and a draft. I guess I have one in the packet. Oh, okay, here. Sorry.
Go share.
Okay, I can share. You know, Judy, you can share. You guys have yours?
I have mine from last time.
It wasn't the old packet, it wasn't in the.
Yeah, I, I apologize and try to, we did so much paper. So I did not.
Okay, well, I can, we can share, Scott. Yeah, so what it was, so anyway, the idea was for everyone to look at it. And we know Bob King had definite opinion about that this was not necessary. But anyway, I had read it. I thought it was great, but I didn't want to jump in. And then again, if you, if everyone, if people still need more time to look at it, I'm fine with that too, given it's ten o'clock.
I think I was comfortable with the content. I think, wasn't the question, did we need something like that? Wasn't that where, where we?
No, my question is the authority issue. Where, where does this, where does this planning commission derive the authority to make, make this kind of a recommendation or make this kind of a?
I propose that we put this on the meeting for next, next month because I, I didn't, I was really. I'm happy to look at that.
Let me, let me get your questions though, Bob, so we can have those answered.
I went through the code book, you know, pretty with the fine tooth comb. And what I came up with was the town council and the mayor advise the commissions what to do. Okay, there's, I, I didn't see where, other than you have some site plan authority and those types of things, I, I just didn't see anything that, that grants this commission or any other commission the right or the authority to make their own rules of procedure.
That's, the planning commission is actually afforded that authority through the Maryland annotated code, the land use article. So I can forward that to everybody for discussion next.
Well, now, let's go, any other questions or open dishes so we can get this resolved for next time? Got yours, anybody else's?
I sent an email book to you and to Leslie with my thoughts.
Do you mind sending him, do you mind going ahead and sharing that with other members?
Heather, you said you could send the land use article section out? Or even just the site would be fine for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, so send the, the site, land used. Okay, I mean, I agree, right now I'm brain dead and quelling fast, so. Sorry, guys. The alarm clock starts, we all know, early. Okay, so let's just jump on to, Bob, your county liaison report, Harrison LaShire update. Go for it.
As, as far as I can get on Harrison LaShire, they finished the water test and, and I think Barney would, would be able to give us a better answer on that. But right now, IDA and the town council, two, two members of the town council and all of the, all of the players are trying to coordinate a meeting sometime in about the next thirty days. They're going through schedules right now. And I think that meeting now, Mr. Hushower and Mr. Poyer are the two councilmen that are, that are involved at that level. EDC, MAMSA and the Greater Mount Area Chamber of Commerce are working together very well to define areas of responsibilities and those areas where we need to, to work together on. The Chili Cook Off, more cooked than ever before, hopes to be the largest chili cook off ever in the town of Mount Area. April seventh, Saturday, April seventh, ten AM to five PM downtown. Main Street is closed from six o'clock in the morning to five o'clock in the evening. Park at the Count Cormal Grounds, park free at the Cormal Grounds and take the shuttle to downtown. Next EDC meeting is this Wednesday at seven PM right here. You know, as far as Harrison LaShire, can you? I, I didn't understand, though there were so many people that were talking about what the water meant, what the, what the pump tests or the well tests and where they were meant, and I didn't agree with any of them.
Sure, so, so we did get a final report from our consultants who did the drill, the, not the drills, the testing of the existing wells. And, um, from their interpretation of all the results, it's successful. Looks like we can get two hundred thousand gallons a day. A lot of that goes, some of that goes back to the IDA where some of it would come to the town. And, but MDE does make the ultimate decision on what the, that appropriation amount would be. So we do have an application for appropriation on those wells. And so we need MDE to respond to that. And then also we would end up needing the rights to that water, whether we annex the land or just get the water rights as well or something. That would be the next step after that.
And I think the other realization, and Bob brought it to our attention last month, was whether we annex that property or not, that development's going to go forward.
So I'm just going to make the point that that entire site of town between this development, the greenfields and this other thing is a huge impact on a very quiet part of town at this point. That it's not had very little, very well established, people have been there a long time. We've all, I mean, so I just.
Yeah.
I think that we just need to be aware of that and conscious of, of how we move forward with this. I realize a lot of these things are already in play and so there's.
But those same residents who are here tonight need to know about this and need to know.
Because that's the same street that crossing over Main Street is, you know, this, that whole area is going to be.
Right, yeah, because the Carroll County code for those buildings is four stories.
Right. You had said that.
Ours is three, theirs is four. So if it stays, I know it's, I'm not saying that it, you know.
Development's going to happen there one way or another.
Exactly.
I just think we need to be very.
Right. So do we want control or do we give it away?
And that's always had been our argument, that, that's what prompted us to do that ordinance was because we, we knew it was coming and it was either us, the way we want, or the way they want.
That, you make a great point, Judy. From a timing standpoint, if we could separate the timing from green trees from OPE and Harrison LaShire.
They're going to come at the same time.
Well, we're going to need to manage it to be separate.
It's going to be.
Because it's going to be too much at one time.
They're going to have to build up some sidewalks.
There's something to be said.
Nothing else, give me a damn sidewalk right now.
That's what I was, that's what I was asking. Is there, is there anything in the town that is scheduled or anything to put sidewalks up there on North Main Street?
We, we had budgeted for it, but then it.
It gets cut out or?
Not, not everybody wanted it, so it got halted.
I heard one person didn't want it. I don't even remember getting mine, but maybe, maybe my husband got it.
Well, the, the first, the first section was only just go a short distance. Just up to North Town Court, down to the school.
We would have been covered.
But, but that.
The town was paying for it.
That didn't move forward. The town was paying for it.
Wow.
But then they would, each homeowner would have to agree to maintain it.
Maintain it. That's, that's what the rub is to maintain this. I know.
By maintaining it, it just means.
Well, yeah, but if it, if it cracks and stuff.
And you're responsible.
Yeah, and you're responsible.
If it's new and it's.
Yeah, done right.
You can see what's, what's developing over the next five, ten, fifteen years. We're going to have sectors of town, whether it's, it's Mount Area East or it's Mount Area North. And the complexity of multiple things going on, we're going to have to anticipate it. There's going to have to be more due diligence. There's going to have to be more planning sophistication and coordination to deal with it. Cause it's, it's, we're starting to see layers. And there's going to be several factors. That also means probably we're going to need, the town's going to need to do due diligence and planning in advance of these other issues because you've got a bunch of things starting to ramp up.
I think there's also a level of community education that needs to happen.
Definitely, yes.
I just don't think, um, you know, I mean, that's how I ended up on the commission is because I was very concerned about what was going on with Harrison LaShire. I didn't realize at the time that there was either we develop it or the county's going to do it, one of the two. So where do you want to be? And so that, those conversations, but I don't know how much folks know about that.
They do.
Well, they can't because it's all been secret.
Right.
Well, right.
So that, this greenfield thing or the green tree, whatever that is, that, you know, that's going to go through. That can either be commercial or it can be commercial residential. I mean, bottom line is it's going to happen and, you know, so.
Yeah.
I, I just think the more that we can help educate and engage the community to help do it in a way that's meaningful.
That really needs to be one of the roles, one of the responsibilities that we start to work in to the whole.
Yes.
Set. It really is, that's really important going forward.
Okay, let's, we're jumping on to downtown master plan. So we had a steering committee, we had a meeting, which like everybody in town was there. You know, it was all commissioned, so Roxanne, Bill, Leslie and myself and everybody else was there. Then we had narrowed it down to a steering committee, which was basically the chairs and vice chair, and they designated their alternate, I'm on there, Leslie's my alternate. And then, then we had our first meeting as, as a steering committee and that was thankfully only an hour. And Bob, you want to jump in, but it was, it was great talking, because then they really, they said basically everything they said at the first meeting, which only took two and a half hours. And, but then they narrowed, what they did decide though is to go with the. And, but then they narrowed, what they did decide, though, is to go with the process of charrettes. Rather, it was a choice of workshops or charrettes. Now, the deal with the charrettes is it's a faster, more dynamic.
I think more intense one.
Very intense, yes. My concern, again, about, was how people, people who work can make it, make it, and they're assured me, and I voted against that one. Yeah, I voted against it, but I voted, but I lost that one, and Heather voted against with me. But, so they are gonna design, though, that there will be, for the people who work, you can come and make and see what they've gotten that day, so you will be involved. It's not like it's going by you, sorry. And we don't have, you know, as a commuter, a community, we don't, that we will have impact.
So they're doing these charrettes with, in a community where many, many people work, and they're only doing it during the day?
No, no. Starts at eight o'clock in the morning, goes to eight o'clock at night.
Oh, oh.
And then what they'll have, when you come in at five, or five o'clock, or whatever, they're, yeah, and they're gonna have the boards of what they've done so far, so it's gonna be very interactive.
Got it.
But they're also gonna have a first introductory workshop to talk about it. And again, if you missed the first meeting, and you missed the first, second, the steering committee meeting, you get to hear it all over again, at the introductory phase, at the community level.
Got it.
And then-
This is for Carroll County?
Yes, yes, and this is, well, downtown master plan.
This is downtown master plan.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, this is the downtown, just to remember that, the whole, we hired those consultants at a huge price, so.
Did they estimate, what that?
They were said, they had said the whole process could last up to eight months.
No, you don't need the next meeting.
They haven't told us when the next one is, and that will be the, just the open community workshop. They, the first phase is three phases, the first phase is like three months, three months, three months, and give or take. And they also assured us, though, that when they got to the, come down to the charrette, and they get a product that we're taking back out to the community, we're not nailed into that product, there's a lot of back and forth still on, did you, you know, did you like it or not? And so we, that's when, we definitely want to make sure everyone gets, gets involved. Even if you can't attend the charrette in the evening, that you know about it, and you've had some, you've seen it. And they're, they're gonna be putting it up on the town website.
Yeah.
Now, are they gonna have their?
Two or three public, two or three other public.
Yeah, yeah, so the, two or three other, wait a minute, what were you saying, Bob?
Public meetings, meetings with the public, or?
Right, so the first is a visioning session, which is key, because that's going to steer sort of how the charrette goes. The charrette, like, the four days, there'll be check-in times, you know, so they're, they're structured, that there's a lot of, like, work time. And then there will be, like, breakout sessions where the public can receive the information. The visioning session is scheduled, they were saying, when we met, about forty-five days out. But we've asked to make certain that the public notice is at least three weeks, if not thirty days. And that will be on our website, I think that they're gonna do, like, I think they're gonna generate website material that's going to be on our website. So, and word of mouth is, just like what Lindy's doing right now, is getting the word out there, so.
Can we, can we structure a communication plan for this? And critical to it is gonna be briefings and outlines for the media. So they can be aware, and they can report, you know, and share that publicly with what's going on, you know, and what each stage is, and what are the learnings, and how will they proceed and all that, that will be huge.
Well, Bob, can you also bring that up, bring it, talk about it in your town council report?
Or, yeah, please.
And Larry?
We've got to identify someone who's, who's got some pretty good communication shops to help outline this.
Because these two guys, Larry and Bob, are the representing council at, and the, and the steering committee. The steering committee, besides, you know, EDC and Barney, Heather, Monica, Melissa, um-
Sean Brown gave his notice.
You're kidding.
Twenty-third of it, twenty-third of it, he's gone.
Oh, jeez.
And, um Yeah, so, and our consultant can maybe, I'll have a conversation with Monica to see if our consultant can have, like, a takeaway sheet that outlines the process.
And what I will do, I will email you, I got an upload from Cecily, whatever her name is.
Cecily?
Yeah, and I can forward that to you all.
And I'm, I'm not sure that they have a schedule that's, that's hammered in stone for us to look at yet.
No, they, they don't, everything's very fluid right now.
Yes.
I can do this if anything.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, we're paying the consultants, yeah, so.
I think it would be neat if we could get some, a little bit of a video about what's happening on the website, you know? I mean, I'll sit down and talk, and talk about what's gonna happen, so the public can see that, you know? Tell them what's happening, what's going on, or Facebook or something.
Well, let me go ahead and send you, send you, email you what I have so far, okay? So that you all know what's going on, I just wanted to keep you informed. Okay, we killed that one. Next Planning Commission date's April thirtieth, zoning administrative report, you have it at this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Is it second?
Second, I have it.
Okay, we adjourned at eight, ten, eight, ten, whatever, ten eighteen, sorry, guys, it's so late, I knew it was gonna be a long night. Thank you, everyone, for ten-